How we implement Prop 39.
How are charter schools performing, by the way? Do they include all grade levels at this point?
Yes, the charter law really spans from K to 12. And so across the state and here in Los Angeles, we have a wonderful diversity of schools serving children all the way from K to 12. Some schools, Jack, are solely elementary, K-5. Others are solely middle school and some are solely high school. However, we do have schools that develop a model that is K-12. Some examples in Los Angeles, for example, are VON Next Century Learning Center in the Valley, the Accelerated School in South Los Angeles, the U Park Elementary, Middle School and High School are examples of schools that have K to 12. Camino Nuevo, Charter Academy. These are schools that have found as part of their model and serving the community that it's been effective to serve all grade levels.
I suppose I thought there was a need for a charter school in my area, my neighborhood, perhaps. How would I go about taking the first steps to getting that accomplished?
We love hearing that question, Jack. You know, even with 103 charter schools in the city of Los Angeles Unified, serving about 43,000 children or families, we are still receiving that same question from families who want to start charter schools, not only families, teachers, administrators, other leaders. So there is a process that we go through to help do that. Very simply, you create, you look for the need in the community. You create a team of professionals to meet that need. Then you create a charter document. And a charter document has certain specified elements that need to be written into it. And then you go through to an authorizer, for example, Los Angeles Unified School District. You go through a process where then that goes to the Board of Education for approval. And once you get approved, then you start either that same fall or next fall. And our association works with many individuals and teams that are looking to develop charter schools across the state.
Let me jump in with a question about that because you passed by something that I know a lot of people have noticed or thought about. Up until relatively recently, the impression was that the school district, the school board itself, was relatively loath to authorize charter schools. But I think you just mentioned there are now 103 of them within the district boundaries?
Let's be clear. The district is the leader in authorizing charter schools across the nation with 103. In New York, for example, they just lifted a cap of 100. But in the whole state, there are currently about 100 charter schools that have been approved. So Los Angeles Unified has been the leader in terms of approving charters.
How many children would be in attendance in the charter schools in LA? And by the way, what kind of a percentage is that of the total student population?
About 6%. We're talking about 103 schools serving 43,000 children in the city of Los Angeles under the LA Unified School District. The school district itself, apart from charter schools, has over 700 schools serving about 720,000 students.
In fact, somebody told me that we have the largest charter school in the country within the LAUSD confines.
Correct. Granada Hills Charter High School in Granada Hills is the largest with approaching 4,000 students, also regional academic decathlon champions this year and placed second nationally and are doing great things. Now, Jack, it's important to note, that school was a traditional public school that some years ago, based on the need in that school and what that school wanted to do, converted. It converted its status. It changed into what is now an independent charter school. So while it's still under the umbrella of the Los Angeles Unified School District, all charter schools are, as I mentioned earlier, it operates independently. And that's one important note I want to make sure our viewers know. Charter schools are public schools, but they are given the independence on the whole to operate, but they're also held accountable for results. So in the case of Granada Hills, a school that is now independent, they've seen their scores continually grow. This last year, obviously, a stellar example is their academic decathlon victory. They also are seeing that their teachers, their staff, their community is empowered, engaged, and making sure that while they're a large school, every child has an opportunity to be successful.
I want to bring up, forgive me for jumping in, but another question that I hear asked a lot, and I frankly don't know the answer. I hear a lot of administrators and teachers over the years saying that they are so regulated, in their view sometimes overregulated, by the state of California in virtually drawing up their lesson plan for every day of the school year. Is the same sort of regulation and imposition of requirements for curricula placed on charter schools?
Charter schools as public schools must meet all of the California state standards. They are also judged in terms of their test scores under what's called the Academic Performance Index. So they must comply with every piece of those standards that a traditional school must comply with. Now, they are given more autonomy at the school site in terms of their curriculum, innovative practices, professional development, to achieve those ends. But let's make no mistake about it, charter schools, if they are not succeeding in improving student achievement, which is the main reason why charter schools are existing, then they will be closed. Now, our focus is making sure that there are high-quality options for parents across the city and across the state. And charter schools on the whole, Jack, in LA Unified as an example, are outperforming their peer traditional schools at every level. So at the elementary, middle, and high school level, on the API rankings, on average, charter schools are outperforming, which means that they're on the whole meeting the intent of the law, which is increasing student achievement.
I wonder if that's not a contentious thing because I believe the United Teachers of Los Angeles has suggested that the numbers may be otherwise and that the situation might not be as far tuned over into the positive side for the charter schools. How do you respond to that?
Well, we're open to the dialogue to make sure that we have all the facts straight and that we're all operating from the same information. Now, when we make the comparisons, we're using the data that all schools and school districts have from the California Department of Education. And when we have done our analysis, for example, on the rankings and how charter schools are faring in comparison to traditional schools, we've also gotten input from the head of the data department at LA Unified to make sure that we're looking at the same data and that we're fairly categorizing the results. And so I think it's important that we continue to leave the open, have openness for the dialogue, but we are looking at the same data pieces. Now, I will say to your earlier point, you talked about a context of maybe some contention between, say, LA Unified School District and charter schools. I think one of the reasons why there's contention, Jack, is because now we're talking about a larger number of schools that are serving a larger number of students. And what I've heard at board meetings is we've lost $1 billion in the last two years. We've lost 45,000 students over the last two years. Part of that is attributed to charter schools, however, not all of it. It's other economic factors, mobility of community, et cetera, jobs, housing. I think what's important is that we have our open, honest, candid discussions based on the right information. And the charter school movement is more than willing to partner with the school district to, in fact, improve all public schools.
Well, let's bring it back to the City Council meeting, which obviously is the reason that we've invited you in this week. LA City Council, obviously trying to make it easier for new charter schools to come online. How would the new one-stop permit centers help in this case?
Well, first, as from the association, we want to first recognize that the reason we're having this discussion at the city level and the partnership, really, we want to thank the leadership of the mayor in making sure that the success of the city is inextricably tied with the success of our schools. And without that leadership, some of these discussions wouldn't be had. Secondly, we want to acknowledge the leadership of Councilmember Janice Hahn and Mr. Huizar for leading this policy. Now, how this helps is very clear. First of all, we're very excited and the charter community is very excited because facilities is one of the biggest challenges facing charter schools and charter school growth to serve the demands of the parents. For example, in addition to the 40,000-plus students we're serving, we have tens of thousands on waiting lists that would love to send their child to a charter school. So facilities is one big obstacle hindering that growth and that service to the community. How this motion helps, it takes a huge step forward in coordinating general managers from the key departments of Los Angeles Building and Safety, Department of Transportation, Planning, LA Fire Department, for example, to get together to communicate more effectively and coordinate the case management to expedite charter school facility processes. Now, what's clear is, and what our ownership of this process is as well, Jack, is that the charter schools also are going to get better and more educated, and we've done this already, to making sure that they know how to navigate the system more effectively so that they're also part of the solution and we're able to then work effectively to get facilities to meet the needs of students.
Before we run completely out of time, if our viewers want more information concerning charter schools, who do they call? Where can they go?
We'd love to have you call our office at (213) 244-1446, or please visit our website,
Very good. Mr. Cold, good chair, thanks for coming in and joining us on Council Weekend Review.
Pleasure to be here. Thanks a lot. We look forward to great partnerships into the future with the city of Los Angeles and a variety of different community-based groups throughout the city and the Los Angeles Unified School District in the hopes of making sure all of our public schools are excellent schools for all of our children.
And again, the plan to establish a one-stop permit office for charter schools was approved with a vote of 11 ayes. LA City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 27, 2007. On behalf of Michael Flynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Weekend Review.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, May 2, 2007. We are in the John Ferraro Memorial Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of the month, of the week, excuse me, 10:00 a.m. for our council meetings. The first Friday of the month, we meet in Van Nuys City Hall, as we will for our next meeting on this Friday. We invite members of the public down to our council meetings, which are open to the public, of course, and also are available for viewing online and on television. We welcome our viewers on Channel 35 who have joined us for our live broadcast or for the rebroadcast in the evening. We also are available online at lacity.org, where you can hear live streaming video of our council meetings as well. Finally, if you're not close to a computer or a television, you can always call in with your phone and listen to council meetings and our committee meetings via Council Phone, a service of our Information Technology Agency. That number is (213) 621-CITY, and you can dial through the menu and listen to the council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. We will be continuing our budget hearings later this afternoon, as we have all week and last week, for our annual budget. Members of the public are also invited to speak and give public comment pursuant to the State's Brown Act. We have agendas in the back of the meeting. There's also agendas available online at lacity.org. Those are posted 72 hours in advance, or for special meetings, 24 hours in advance. And you can look through those or go to the city clerk's office and get one there. Items on the agenda are split into two different categories, items which have had public hearings in committee, or items for which public hearings have not yet been held. All items receive a public hearing, availability for the public to comment, either in committee or council. If you'd like to be heard on an item that has not yet had its public hearing in committee, please fill out a speaker card and give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms here, and we'll make sure that that gets in and we can hear your comments. Lastly, public comment is the part of the meeting that affords all members of the public the ability to comment on items that are under our jurisdiction but are not formally on our agendas. If you'd like to be heard there as well, please fill out a speaker card and give it to the sergeants-at-arms, and we will make sure that you are heard as well. If you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always watch our meetings from the Van Nuys Council Chambers, and there you can fill out a card, and we are able to watch you on television and here in council chambers with a video conferencing capability and take your public testimony that way as well. I want to thank the council members who are here, Councilmember Cardenas, Huizar, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, and Zine pursuant to our council rules. That is eight members. We need 2/3 of our 15-member body, or 10 members, to constitute a quorum and to begin the meeting. So we are still awaiting two more members to be able to start the meeting. Councilmembers Alarcon and Labange are excused, and Councilmember Hahn is excused to arrive later today, so she will be in here shortly. That leaves Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Weiss. We are waiting two of you to come down to constitute a quorum and begin the meeting. Sorry, one of you, Councilmember Weiss, Perry, and Reyes, if you will please make your way down, we will begin our meeting soon as possible. I want to thank our viewing audience and members of the public for their patience in the meantime. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Huizar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present on a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas moves, and Ms. Grul seconds without objection. Those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll return to public comment as the first business item we take up.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to send items 10 and 29 back to the Personnel Committee.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to send 10 or 29 to the Personnel Committee? Mr. Zine gives a thumbs up. That should yield a couple objections right there, no? All right. Seeing none, those will be referred back. Next items, please.
Items 1 through 22, with the exception of 10, are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 1 and 2 are confirmation of city officials. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Please, let's hold the 1 and 2 on the desk. Specials?
And on item 11, the Plumb Committee waived consideration, a motion from the floor is required on that item.
Okay. We do have cards on that, and since we did waive that, that will be triggered for a special, and we will hear from the public on number 11. Mr. Huizar and then Ms. Grul?
We call item 15 special.
15 for Mr. Huizar.
And also continue 8 and 9.
Till when?
If we could.
One week?
30 days.
30 days?
Yeah.
Okay. That would take us to June 1. Ms. Grul?
Item 4 and item 20.
4 and 20 for Ms. Grul. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance. Actually, I'm sorry, let's hold 3 since it's an ordinance and we do expect to have 12 members. So on the balance, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 23 through 47, with the exception of 29, are items for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials but 23 to 47? We do have cards on 40, and there are no other cards, so we will open and close the public hearings on the remainder. Any specials, Mr. Parks? 29?
Yes.
29 for Mr. Parks. Oh, that has been, we referred that to Personnel without objection? Do you want to... Okay. Is that all right, Mr. Parks? Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing, yes, Mr. Zine.
No, those are... They're combined.
Yeah, they're both were approved to go back.
Thank you.
Okay. And on the, except for the ordinances, which is 23 through 25, on the others, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 48 is the closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, and we do have a public speaker card on that, too, so we will hear that before we go into closed session on that item as well. Mr. Smith?
Let's just ask for a forthwith on 17.
17 without objection, colleagues. We will send forthwith. Thank you. If we can return back to public comment now. And our first speaker is Melrose Larry Green. Invite him to come forward. Arnold Sachs will be our next speaker after that. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Protem. I know you are the mayor, acting as Mayor Virgo is in Latin America, so good morning, Mayor Protem Garcetti and the rest of the city council. I am Melrose Larry Green, and I wanted to speak up this morning as a citizen of the city of LA who was at the march yesterday and witnessed what was going on. I wasn't at the evening march, I was all day, though, on Broadway, and the LAPD behaved wonderfully. I witnessed people in the crowd, remind you, a small minority of the crowd, maybe just a few hundred out of all the people there, who were taunting the police, who were cussing at the police, who were spitting at the police. I saw it. I saw the American flag tattered, dragged through the streets of Broadway. There's a picture of the tattered American flag today. As a last resort, the police used physical force last night. As usual, let's quote Ronald Reagan, "There they go again, the media. They got it all wrong." 99.99% of the people yesterday were law-abiding people, and a few anarchists ruined it. They shot foam from those guns. Nobody ever died or got hurt seriously from foam. LAPD, if you're not going to support them, and if the mayor won't support them, and I know the media won't, I, Melrose Larry Green, and I know Dennis Zine and you two, my two Republicans here, will support the LAPD. Thank God for the LAPD, and I want to hear some rounds of support. I want to nip this one in the bud. I witnessed them yesterday, they were wonderful, I support them, I stood with them, I stand with them, and you know what? If I was the mayor this morning, I wouldn't be looking for investigations. I would be supporting our... morning, I wouldn't be looking for investigations. I would be supporting our LAPD. Secondly, on a more, less serious note, as a basketball fan, I want us all to pray for our beloved Lakers. Tonight, the Lakers face elimination with the Phoenix Suns, and let's not, let's not forget that we once had showtime in this city. I'm Melrose Larry Green, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Our next speaker is Arnold Sachs. After that will be, uh, Chris Bunting.
Good morning, council members. Thank you very much. I just wanted to address an article from yesterday, uh, May, April thirtieth, Business Section, "A New Source of Pressure on Grocers." It claims that the LA Alliance for a New Economy is characterized as a labor-friendly nonprofit, and they're going to help the union, uh, they're going to assist the unions in their fight with the grocers. Um, listed in part as helping to formulate the recent city legislation extending protection of the city's living wage ordinance to workers at the airport or area hotels. Um, but wait a second, that ordinance was challenged in court as being in violation of state laws and referendums, so that's kind of help that you really don't want to get. But this does give me an opportunity to ask what the City Council's position is, uh, on this labor dispute. The City Council has, um, has been quoted and said in, when it was discussing the living wage ordinance, how labor-friendly they are, how, how behind the hotel workers they are, how labor-friendly the city of LA is. Um, it's gone as far as to have some of the City Council members ask for a, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? A boycott of hotels that don't support the area, the wages. So what's the stand by the City Council on this, the grocer, uh, workers dispute? This is a time for them to step up and say how friendly, labor-friendly they are, or how, uh, worker-friendly they are. I'd like to hear some response from some of the City Council members on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Chris Bunting is our next speaker. After that is Don Duncan. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Chris Bunting, I'm an Assistant Location Manager. Recently, I received an email from Film LA citing that Sunken City in San Pedro would no longer be permitted for filming. Um, I have issue with that because, uh, there have been eighteen deaths in the last five years. Um, the toxicology report has not come back from the last death, but it took place at four o'clock in the morning, and I'd be willing to bet she wasn't playing bridge. Um, the thing is, is with, there has been no deaths related at all due to filming. I live in San Pedro, I would like to keep filming in LA, I'd like to be, obviously, because then I still have a job. Um, it's a very interesting, um, place to film in Sunken City, and I would like to know if we could get that addressed and here, um, you know, the, behind my union local, if we could get that open to an agenda, if there's any options that could be offered, and if we could be heard in saying that we think that, you know, we would still very much like to film in a very interesting location right here in California, which will not only keep jobs here in California, because they can very easily go to Canada. So I'm, I'm asking, um, when I would spoke to Parks and Rec, they don't really know what they're going to do. I contacted Janice Han's office, and they're like, you know, the bottom line is, is that it's unsafe. I understand it's unsafe, but so is my car if I've been drinking. So I would like to, uh, have you guys look at that and see, uh, what can our next step be, and, uh, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Don Duncan is our next speaker. After that will be Chris Fusco. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. My name is Don Duncan. I'm the Southern California Coordinator for Americans for Safe Access. We're the, uh, national lobby organization working to eliminate barriers to safe access to medical cannabis, and in the past, I've spoken to you in this chamber and in writing about the need to move quickly to establish regulations for the city's numerous medical cannabis dispensing collectives. I'm here again to ask for that, uh, with new urgency, following the last week's events. In Van Nuys last week, one of the, uh, most reputable of the numerous facilities in town was burglarized on Wednesday night, and sadly, on Thursday morning, in the course of that burglary investigation, they were raided by the Los Angeles Police Department. The operator was arrested and booked on felony charges, and had to bail out on a hundred thousand dollars bail. This is precisely the situation that regulations are designed to avoid. There is a tremendous need for clarity with the Los Angeles Police Department about what is legal and what is permissible in the city of Los Angeles. Captain Miller from the Van Nuys Division indicated that edible preparations of cannabis were felonies and not allowed. The collective in Van Nuys was raided and the operator arrested because they had ice cream containing medical cannabis. Nothing in our Health and Safety Code prohibits dispensaries from providing edible forms of medical cannabis, and it's very urgent that before another incident like this happens, there be clear and standard guidelines of what is and is not allowed under the Health and Safety Code, and so I'm here again to ask you to please move forward quickly and give some clarity to the Los Angeles Police Department so that the medical cannabis dispensing collectives that are operating lawfully and ethically in this city can enjoy the full protection of the Los Angeles Police Department. Otherwise, we may have a very unsafe situation if collectives do not feel that they can contact the police in an emergency situation. So I'd ask you once again, please move forward quickly, and I'll be following up my spoken comments today with a letter later today, and would enjoy talking with any of you about how we might move more quickly in this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I know there are a number of people here who would like to speak on this issue. Mr. Zine wanted to give a brief response.
I just want to respond to that, that we have, uh, asked the Police Department, Building and Safety, other entities in the city, to draft an ordinance. Uh, we're currently working on that, and I've given them the pressure to get it done quickly. Uh, my committee and my office has been working with the industry to make sure that we can have this done properly and as soon as possible, so I want to assure you that we are well recognizing the importance, significance of this, and certain entities of the city have not responded as quickly as we wish to come to a resolution, but we are working on it out of my office. Just want to make sure you're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our next speaker was, uh, Chris Fusco?
Councilmember Zine, I'd like to thank you so much for taking the initiative of moving forward on this. Um, there are agencies in the city that I wish had been moving faster on this issue, because, uh, the collectives, the medical cannabis patients, and council member Zine and others in the city have seen this situation coming for a while, and we've been trying to move it forward as fast as we possibly can. So I'm asking, uh, whoever here can help move this along faster with the assistance of council member Zine, please, the interim control ordinance is extremely necessary to show the LAPD that something is being done with this. Right now, the collectives themselves have begun setting rules for their operations, because no one else has gotten around to doing it, and we need an interim control ordinance as a positive step to regulations in this city. Captain James Miller, the Van Nuys Division, told us that it's unclear to him whether or not edible cannabis preparations are legal medicine, and Detective Koenig in his division in Narcotics Division backed that up, too. If there are things that are unclear to our Los Angeles Police Department, we need to get them clarity so that they know how to enforce the law and we know how to obey the law. That's so important. Right now, we have a situation where every collective in this city will be scared to report a crime perpetrated on them, because they're going to be worried that the LAPD will investigate the collective instead of the actual crime. That's a horrible, horrible situation, where burglars now know that if they go to a collective, the collective might be too scared to report the crime. It's, this is not a good situation, this is only increasing crime. So please, pass the interim control ordinance as fast as possible, get it to the council floor, and let's move ahead with sensible regulations so that we can give clarity to our LAPDs, so they can enforce the law as they know how. Captain James Miller, the Van Nuys Division, needs clarity that medical cannabis preparations in edible form are legal medicine. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Sarah Armstrong is our next speaker, and then we'll go to Van Nuys for, uh, Roger Waters.
My name is Sarah Armstrong. I'm a member of the Working Group for the Medical Marijuana Ordinance. We've met regularly, we haven't met recently. The raid on the Karma Collective was really regrettable. These people are young idealists, they are honor students, and they were running a completely compliant club. I know this because I am a member. Please, the police need clarity in the worst way, and if we cannot do this immediately, we need to come together to have some interim guidelines for these kinds of situations. You cannot have these clubs afraid to report crimes. You will suffer endlessly if we do not get this resolved soon. Thank you for your time.
Roger Waters out in Van Nuys.
Hey, thank you very much, Eric Garcetti. The name's not required, but you all know the voice. G'day from Van Nuys. Thanks for the invite for coming in, to come in today from yesterday. The Bratton issue, I've got to weigh in on that now, because I represent some of those minority communities that you talk about that don't have their voice heard. But what do I see last night on the news, LAPD bashing Fox eleven news? So, that's a great image to have out there when you're talking about the, the chief of the LAPD being reappointed. Now, I'm not against the appointment, the reappointment of Bratton, but I'm against the automatic reappointment, and this police commission does look like a rubber stamp. And council member Parks here, he's right. That meeting out in the Eighth District was a whole lot of presentations, followed by thirty minutes of public comment, because I, I attended that meeting. So, we've got the chief of police up, looks like for an automatic reappointment, but here we've got people getting beaten. There's some boy, they're telling this boy to, to leave the area, but then they bash him in the legs and crumple him to the ground. That's sickening. We've got the mayor is out of town right now, he's in the LA Times with thirty-one campaign violations when he ran for city council. But the funniest thing is, we've got the city attorney here, he ran for the Democratic State Primary, and he got beaten, because he's not really a Democrat, because in the LA Times last week, we've got a real Democrat, Judge Preggison, appointed by President Clinton, telling LAPD that what they're doing downtown is illegal. So nothing's really changed, and I say, yes, open it up, show us some other candidates. Who's the other candidate? That's how you know it's a rubber stamp, because they're not offering anybody else to look at. Thank you very much. Smackdown.
Thank you. Lenny Fisher is our next speaker here. After that will be Manuel Criollo.
Good afternoon, council, or good morning. I'm a little ahead of myself. My name's Lenny, Lenny Fisher. I'm a forty-four-year resident of the city of Los Angeles. I'm a cancer patient. I suffer from chronic back pain, chronic leg pain. Without medical marijuana, my days are very difficult. When I heard what took place out there last week, I was appalled, and I think our City Council really, really needs to look at the police commission and our chief of police, and send it through him that we do things on a level playing field. In some parts of the city, the police work well with these collectives. In some parts of the city, there's rogue officers that think they're the new sheriff in town or something. I'm here to ask you today to move forward, to get this done. I know it takes a lot of work, and I know there's people working on it, but it can't happen fast enough. We need a moratorium, we need it now. We need the police to understand the rules. Thank you. I trust that you guys will do the work that's necessary. Have a great day.
Thank you very much, Manuel Criollo. And after that will be Marian Fogler out in Van Nuys.
Good afternoon, uh, city council members. My name is Manuel Criollo. I'm the lead organizer with the Bus Riders Union. I'm here mainly because, to follow up on a written letter that we wrote to all members of the City Council to seek your support to oppose MTA's fare increase proposals. As you know, MTA has spoken about raising fares from the day pass from three dollars to five dollars to eight, to eight dollars by two thousand and nine. The monthly bus pass, which is fifty-two dollars right now, to seventy-five dollars to a hundred and twenty dollars by, um, January of two thousand and nine. You know, even an increase of five or ten dollars could mean for a family to spend about three thousand to four thousand dollars, um, a year, just on the cost of transportation. You know our people can't afford it. Eighty percent of all riders at MTA are residents of the city of Los Angeles, and we think it's important that the City Council takes a strong opposition to that fare increase. Um, for us, you know, there's more issues around the, the dropping of ridership. There's a, there's a thought that it might be to twenty-five to forty percent that this increase will drop ridership, and lastly, that this goes against and reneigs against many of the victories that we've been able to gain at, at the, at the MTA. This would, not only is MTA talking about increasing the fares, but at, as, at this moment, we're talking about, MTA is talking about cutting service. They've already moved to cut about seven to ten, eight to, eight million dollars of service this year alone, and there's a plan to cut service by three hundred thousand hours in the next three years. We need your leadership, we need your support. Again, it, this is a, this is a question that not only faces civil rights issues, the environment, and ultimately, that it's going to be, impact the inner core of this city and the most vulnerable people and residents of this city, so I hope we can count on your support. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl, do you want to respond briefly?
The forty words, uh, comment, uh, seriously here right now, um, rising to agree with the bus riders that they should not raise the fares on the buses, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. We'll next go to Van Nuys. Marian Fogler is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl, for that, because tonight is the meeting at six-thirty at Van Nuys Brody Building, uh, Marvin Brody Building here in Van Nuys. We need you all come out and support us. Any council members, I appreciate you coming, because we need your support, because I don't know what this is going to have, this is going to impact children as well, who have to, you know, who are, you know, around fourteen, seventeen years old, who ride the buses, because, who can't afford a car. Of course, it's a luxury now, but I was saying, is that we need you all come out and support us, and, uh, we need you there. Number two, I wanted to say that whatever you're passing here, you're helping or deter, or ham, or hindering the public, you need to take better care when you vote on the issues before you. You need to be very careful how you vote, because you can't just keep rubber-stapping everything, okay? It's costing our city like the, uh, the big, uh, development down here, uh, that we're going to have downtown. This is going to impact the whole city, very much so, it's going to gridlock everybody downtown. They, um, I'm just totally against this, and I'm appalled that you people don't carefully evaluate everything that's before you, that's going to have a reflection and impact on our community, communities and the, and the, uh, the city. And, uh, we have four million people living here now, not just two million. So I, you know, we have gridlock going on, and you need to take better, close look at how you vote for everything, because this is impacting our city. And number three, um, I don't know why there, the people are, I, a lot of the police officers, we got to back them up, okay? We need to know that there are people who are breaking the laws, and you, and that we need to be very careful that, uh, these laws are enforced, and then we have to be behind the law enforcement, we have, we have to, and our fire department, and our, and our city workers, we need to, you know, to care for all of them, because they've worked very hard, and thank you for doing the street, look very good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments this morning. Dolores Otis is our next speaker, and then Alex Grabner, Grabner?
Good morning. Uh, my name is Dolores Otis, I live in the Eighth District, and I'm here because of the tree roots growing into the pipes that have destroyed my piping in the home, which is the main line, sewage. I understand the city has no responsibility and financing in repairing this problem, so I'm asking, is there any state or federal assistance to help own, or homeowners make these repairs? And I'm not saying fix it and give it, I say help homeowners to make these repairs. And how do you go about making an appointment to see the mayor for a meeting?
Be happy to pass on the information, both to get in touch with the mayor and with the council district office as well. If you come over here, we can give you that information for, uh, getting in touch with the mayor's office, okay?
Any state of federal funds?
We'll see if we can get you some information on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Grabner, Grabner?
My name is Alex Grabner. I am a manager at the Karma Collective, the Medical Cannabis Collective, which was raided last week by the LAPD. I'd like to read to you today a statement from Diana Han, the operator who was arrested and charged with felony possession and had bail posted set at a hundred thousand dollars. This is her statement to you. "I want to thank you for listening to these citizens and patients who will no longer turn a blind eye or watch in silence the injustices being perpetrated by those who are supposed to serve, protect, and enforce California's law. Though many of us feel scared and angry and frustrated and confused, today is-" Though many of us feel scared and angry and frustrated and confused, today is an opportunity to redirect the energy of our outrage into forward momentum for our cause and a renewed passion for educating and revealing the truth of our lives and our movement to the LAPD and the community at large. We are people who believe in human rights, in the dignity and freedom of choice of those people who are living, surviving, recovering, and dying. At the end of the day, regardless of our diagnosis, we are all living this beautiful, difficult, ever-changing, and constant human condition. Everyone deserves comfort and compassion, especially those who are nearing the end of this life. Medical cannabis needs to be a safe choice for those who are qualified and choose to use it, and it is all of our personal responsibilities that this is so." Ms. Hahn apologizes for not being able to make it today. She's currently visiting her grandmother, 88-year-old grandmother, who is in the hospital right now, ill with lung cancer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker is Oscar Johnson.
Good morning, city council, honorable guest. My name is Oscar Johnson and I'm affiliated with the LA Bus Riders Union. And I remember numerous of times I ride MTA bus, I feel threatened by the bus operator. Sometimes he opened the back door for other passengers and tell me I have to come out the front door. And there are many, many of times I see young children, under 12-years-old, riding the MTA bus by themselves, day and night, without their parents shepherding them. And also, I'm speaking about the death penalty. We need to tell the district attorney, we want more rights for African-Americans to be uplifted in LA. LA is 90% unsolved murder cases, and it's ridiculous in the United States for us to keep living under. And our mayor should step up and see how the city is operating, instead of just standing in that seat where he's standing, right over LA. LA is a very neglected waste for us. And we tax, taxpayer-paying money, they got people like Crystal cleaning up the city of LA downtown. And we should have better employment, and we need more jobs in LA. We need more jobs in LA for the community, and we also need more recreation. And we need better government. That's why, and we need our rights more protected when we protest, when we protest against the district attorney office and the mayor office and the chief of police. And it is an insult for us to have that same chief of police again. Thanks.
Thank you. That will close our public comment for today. If we can take up the ordinances that were before us, 3, 23, 24, and 25. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Those are approved. If we can go back to the appointments at hand.
Item one is the appointment of Mr. Robert Andrade as the permanent general manager of El Pueblo.
Okay. I'd like to ask Mr. Andrade to come forward. This went through Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging, and I know Mr. Labange would very much like to be here, but is unfortunately excused today on city business with the mayor in Latin America. So, would you like to address the council and say anything? You're certainly a familiar face around here, and we've done a great job as our interim general manager, but afford you the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you, council president and distinguished council members. Forty-four settlers and some 225 years later, Los Angeles is becoming, or is a leading metropolis in the 21st century. Our city's ability to survive and overcome and ultimately thrive is due in large measure to its capacity to recast itself. Similarly, I see that as my role as now general manager. The reinvention of El Pueblo is critical to its survival and prominence. A new identity that respects our multicultural and multi-ethnic past and defines our future is our course of action. The revitalization will range from renovation of puestos to improving infrastructure, from strengthening existing business relationships, to developing new economic opportunities, to maintaining longstanding cultural events and community exhibits, and to building the Cicados mural project and a state-of-the-art interpretive center. Nourishing our multi-ethnic legacy is our hallmark. Where else can one enjoy attending the latest exhibit at our Chinese-American museum, or participate in the activities of the Italian-American Hall Federation, or dine at one of our These and other similar events and activities offer a broad appeal to local business people, artists, cultural preservationists, historians, international tourists, educators, school-age children, and parents. El Pueblo is being transformed into the best-managed small department in the City of Los Angeles by creating a working environment where staff is challenged, respected, and valued for their contribution to the organization, all of us focused on service to the public. El Pueblo will be a premier public historic destination for all to enjoy. I look forward enthusiastically to the challenge ahead and remain committed to these endeavors and to our city. I am proud and honored to be appointed general manager. I look forward to your vote. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my friends, colleagues, and family who've supported me throughout the years, in particular, the Jesuits for my education and my spiritual development, for my colleagues in the CAO's office, my colleagues in the CLA's office for my professional development, the mayor for giving me an opportunity to serve you and to serve the City of Los Angeles, and the council for its unwavering support throughout the years, in particular, Council President Garcetti, Councilman Reyes, Councilman Weisar, Councilwoman Perry, Councilwoman Grul, Councilman Labange, and the rest of your colleagues. I thank you. I'm committed to doing a job for you.
Great. Thank you very, very much, and you always have. Ms. Perry is our next speaker.
I just wanted to rise in support, our chair's not here, and I wanted to rise in support of Mr. Andrade. I think he is uniquely suited for this position. His history with the city is exceptional. His focus and ability to deal with complex situations, his background with municipal finance and problem-solving should enhance the quality of the reinvigoration of El Pueblo, and his grasp of the history and the diversity of El Pueblo is well documented. So, I think this is a wonderful appointment and look forward to working with him for many years to come.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry, and I've very much enjoyed in my time in office working with you very closely as well, Mr. Andrade, and congratulations, and thank you to the mayor for a great nomination. With that, let's make it official. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, our new permanent manager of El Pueblo. Next appointment, please.
Item two is the appointment of Mr. Glenn Dake to the Cultural Heritage Commission.
Mr. Dake, if you would be kind enough to come forward, make a familiar face to a couple people around this room. And I know, again, Mr. Labange is not here. I also wanted to welcome Mona Field, our Community College District trustee, who's with us today. Thank you very much for being here. I know she had a delegation from China that was here a little earlier. Thank you for being here in council chambers. And Mr. Dake, if you'd like to do the same thing and express your interest in serving. As a former staffer in my office, I'm sure I'm conflicted, out on saying anything too positive, but it's all true what you've heard about Mr. Dake, a very able and committed volunteer in the community, and somebody who did great work when he was an official employee of the City of Los Angeles, and very much look forward to this nomination. So, with that.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, and I see public service as an honor, and I was very touched to be appointed, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Short speeches win elections. Ms. Perry is our first speaker. I think she has a thing to say, too.
I want to speak affirmatively for this gentleman. He has done an enormous amount of work in the 9th District and helping community-based gardening and farming to take place in an organized and focused and strategic fashion. He has the patience of Job and deep love and passion for doing what he does at the grassroots level without need for recognition or affirmation of his ego. And I just want to say that it's been a pleasure to have him out there in the field, working on behalf of people, not the field, the community, working on behalf of people. So, I wanted to speak on the record on his behalf.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. And seeing no other speakers, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Sit tight one second, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Welcome aboard. Next item, please.
Item four was called special by councilmember Grul.
Okay, we have item number four. Ms. Grul.
Thank you. Do we have someone from the department here? Oh, great. Thank you. Please come to the table. And I really just called this special to make some clarification, because I did have some questions from one of my constituents, and I just want to make sure that we're okay with two of the items. One is, he wanted to make sure that there was a volunteer, excuse me, a recordation of a volunteer covenant restricting the number of units on the property to 96 allowed under the current project. Has that been recorded yet?
Yes, Jim Tokunaga with the City Planning Department. Yes, the applicant has recorded a covenant agreement restricting it to the number of units.
To the number of units, okay. And then, there also was some concern related to the hall route application for this project, because there, as we know, several projects on this particular street and coordination with the other projects currently being done. Can we instruct you at this point to, during that, be coordinated with all the other concurrent projects in the area?
Yeah, what we can do is flag the sites, perhaps with the building and safety departments, since they're the ones that actually issue the hall route permits, and so that if a hall route application is applied for on a particular site, that they check the other sites to see if there's been a permit issued on the other ones.
Okay, okay. Great. Just wanted to get those answers on the record. Thank you. This has, I know, been a challenging project throughout the whole process. So, thank you, Mr. President. I asked for, and I vote on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. With that, let's go ahead, prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thank you.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 11 was called special for cards from the public, and a motion is required on this item.
Okay. Colleagues, if I could have everyone's attention, this is a fair hearing matter requiring the council members' height and attention. If I could ask everybody on this land use matter to please direct their attention. We have a number of speaker cards. I'd like to invite forward first Diane Goodman-Tuckmeyer and Joseph Tuckmeyer as well.
Good morning. My name's Joe Tuckmeyer, and this is Diane Goodman-Tuckmeyer.
Good morning.
And there are a number of speakers, and they have agreed to yield to me if that's acceptable to the city council. We're here on a hall route permit application that was approved, and we believe improperly in that the building and safety did not adequately take into account the cumulative effect of this hall route, which proposes to remove 19,800 cubic yards of hillside from Laurel Canyon. In consideration of this removal, the building and safety did not take into account that the effect of nearly 5,000 dump truck trips, that's being about 2,500 coming in and 2,500 going out on the traffic patterns in Laurel Canyon. There are presently approved at least eight other projects which have priority, which will be removing... Did I do something wrong?
That was the timer. We have a timer there to help people guide their comments.
Right. I have some other speakers who are willing to yield to me.
We can't unfortunately do the yielding under our council rules. My apologies, but we, actually, you were Joseph Tuckmeyer?
Yes, I am.
Barbara, was it Barbara Tuckmeyer before?
Diane.
Diane, I'm sorry. So, if we can, hold on one second. Okay, I've been informed by the city attorney, we'll do two minutes per speaker, so go ahead, have one more minute.
Okay. Well, inadequate compliance with the requirements of SEQA and cumulative effect. Also, the hall route failed to take into consideration many of the issues that were raised, including proper staging for the trucks. There needs to be an onsite deputy city inspector paid for by the developer, because the amount of dirt to be removed, the hillside that's going to be removed, is right at the borderline of what was waived on the EIR. And this owner has had problems with the National Futures Association in terms of keeping adequate books and records. If I may, I can submit to the council the report on that, and I also have some pictures of the site, if I could give that to the council.
Thank you. And if you have any of those comments in writing, we'd be happy to take those, one of the sergeants-at-arms will be happy to. David Philamere is our next speaker.
These are pictures.
I'm sorry, did Diane want to speak as well? Diane Tuckmeyer? Nope.
I'm sorry, we can't yield it, but if you don't want to talk, that's fine, but we give
you the opportunity if you would directly like to.
Okay.
Come on forward.
A number of, if, just one second. We were led to believe, apparently erroneously, that the speakers could yield to me, and therefore, they did not.
I'm sorry you're informed about that. We, under our council rules, we cannot do that unfortunately, and we have to apply that evenly across the board. If you can, if you can please have each speaker come forward. Okay? Why don't you come forward to the microphone, ma'am, so we can hear you? Thank you.
I was here several months ago on a zoo matter, and at that time, people were allowed to give their time to...
There had been some confusion, so we formalized the rules. Now, formally part of our rules because of that, and there had been some confusion. So, if you could please continue.
Well, considering I'm completely unprepared, I can say is that this is a huge project that would have an enormous impact on the hillside, which is home to many animals, endangered birds. We are very concerned about the hill itself falling down and taking our houses with it. And I think in the sense of fairness, that my husband should be allowed to present what he has been preparing for so long, in the belief that he would be able to take everyone's time. Can't our views be heard? It's the only fair thing.
We have about 10 or 15 cards, and we have to try to apply that as evenly as possible. We're happy if there's more preparation, as I mentioned, and we can make sure it's copied for all members. If you have it in writing, we will absolutely read every single word of that, so we'd be happy to take it that way. Mr. Smith? Yes?
Was there a public hearing on this?
There was a public hearing on this, but there has been a, sorry, it was waived, so there was not a public hearing, which is why we're having to do it here.
Right. It was scheduled for a public hearing this past Tuesday, but that meeting was canceled because of the marches.
Public hearing at a committee level?
It was scheduled for a public hearing at a committee level, but it never occurred.
It was waived out, yeah.
With an unrestricted timeframe.
Right. We're not putting a time limit on the overall amount of comments that can be given pursuant to our rules. If somebody would like to move to suspend the rules, we could do that, obviously.
For us to continue this item, since the council member from the district is not here...
Apparently, today is the last day to act on the matter. Sorry, Mr. City Attorney? Is this the last day?
I believe Friday's the last day. That's an offsite in Van Nuys.
Council president, if I may.
The chairman of the committee.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Labange and his office asked to address this issue today.
Okay.
It's a hall route issue. It's an issue that does require a public hearing, which we are conducting at this moment. The focus is the hall route. Unfortunately, in under-hall route issues, other kinds of concerns seem to fall into the discussion.
Okay.
And I want to make sure we are focused on what our semi-judiciary role is, is to review the hall route issue. I have amendments to that issue presented by the council member, and if we can proceed with the public hearing, so we can fulfill our role, if that is okay with the body.
Okay, great. And is that amendment available for members of the public? We'll make sure it is, so people can see that.
You know, with all due respect, I mean, I would be happy to allow a few extra minutes for, I move, I move that we have a few extra minutes to listen.
We'll move a formal suspension of the rules, then.
Fairly, because I think since the council member is not here, and it's up to us to really pay attention to this and make a ruling, I would like to hear everything that needs to be said.
I second that. I'll hardly concur. I know there wasn't a public hearing. That's what today's action is about, and so I, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so if this is a public, if this is a public hearing, then let's have it be a public hearing and listen to the public.
Can I ask you to formalize this pursuant to our... Can I ask you to formalize this pursuant to our rules? So are you moving to suspend the rules on this?
I'm moving to suspend the rules.
Okay, and we have a second?
Second.
And how, and what would you suspend the rules for? How long of a presentation?
Yeah, fifteen, ten, fifteen minutes.
Total?
Extra.
Or, extra, for this one individual? I want to be clear...
You gave them ten minutes?
No, no, no. It was open-ended, but two minutes per speaker.
He already said, he said two minutes.
And the request is for this one speaker to go longer than two minutes. That's what this is about.
Which is fine with me.
Okay.
Five minutes.
So five minutes for this speaker?
Thanks.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on the suspension of rules. Sure. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Cardenas?
Mr. President, being that the current speaker said he was misled earlier, can you please clarify for him how much time he has from this moment forward?
We'll give you five additional minutes instead of five total. So if you'd like to take five more minutes, we'll set the clock, and if you just, we'll follow along there, we'll hear for five more minutes, up to five more minutes, of course. Mr. Reyes?
Just one point of information. This action is technically about a haul route, and I just want to make sure we don't lose focus on that, given everything else we're going to hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And of course, because I assume there will be folks on the other side, we will give equal time as a semi-judiciary matter. Please continue, sir.
I want to thank the City Council for allowing me the additional time, focusing on the haul route. I think the haul route in and of itself has to be viewed in the totality of the project because once the project begins, and the, in the hillside, hillsides are unique, they are not the city flats. We are not against development. What we want is responsible development. Right now, the homeowners, the neighbors, the concerned citizens do not know where one of the two homes are going to be built. There is no building permit, no building permits have been granted. There are four building permit applications pending. There are two grading permits applications pending. There is one retaining wall application pending. We do not know the full scope of this project. What is being approved now is based on tentative plans, the plans which could be changed. Now, we recognize these plans can be changed at, in the future, but in order to assess the impact and the amount of hauling that needs to be done, we need plans that have been at least approved. Right now, this is an open-ended ticket. The hillside, once it's dug into, cannot be repaired, cannot be returned to its natural state. If you allow the project to go forward, when there are no permits in place for the building, you are in effect giving an open-ended license, and that is why the cumulative impact is so important and why a full EIR compliance is necessary. The mitigated negative declarations looks at this project in isolation. It did not take into account all the other projects in the area, did not take into account the effect of future development in this area. The lots were divided. We contend without proper notice to the abutting owners. I am an abutting owner and have been so since nineteen seventy-seven. I have other abutting owners here who've been here before the time the lot was divided. The lot where the second house, the second house building permit application gives no details. It does not provide any information as to the square footage of this house, how much parking is going to be required. What we understand is that that house is going to be dug into the hillside, that a four hundred or more foot driveway is going to be constructed, cutting into the hillside. We need more specifics. Again, there's one lot that is already perfectly level there, and it appears that building can be done there, and we're not opposed to that. That lot has been cut and prepared for building for fifty years when this development opened. But the other project that's proposed here is not effectively dealt with in the building permits. It was not effectively considered, we believe, by Building and Safety. If the permit is granted, Building and Safety should have imposed, and we requested, that there be some accountability, some independent monitoring of the amount of dirt that's being removed. Right now, it's self-regulation. I raised this a moment ago, that the owner of this property, as a licensed commodities broker, was charged with, and pled not guilty, but he settled his claims that he had not kept adequate books and records. If he can't keep adequate books and records concerning other people's money, and as a commodities broker, I submit that you cannot allow this individual to be the monitor of how much of the hillside, how much of our resources are being taken away, the full compliance with the rest of the EIRs. This property is located in a high fire danger zone. Laurel Canyon is, everybody knows, it's one of the worst areas in the city. We had the fire at Universal, we had the fire over in Beverly Hills, right in Jack Weiss's area, right across the street from the fire department, and we still lost the structure. We need to ban smoking in this area. The commission did not impose that. We need to have fire suppression equipment on-site. If the local fire department is not in their station, they cannot respond quick enough. We need to have it clarified where off-site parking for the workers is going to be required. Right now, under the M and D, they are required to van pool, but that just means they can drive up the block. There's not enough parking in the neighborhood. It's a very, very narrow street. There are two cul-de-sacs. There's not enough parking there, and this was not adequately dealt with. The commission asked us to work with the developer. We've tried to work with the developer. He refuses to speak with us. We are not against total banning. What we want is some responsible conditions, and we believe that the haul route permit should be not permanently denied, but denied without prejudice to being brought back at a later time when there's full compliance with the EIR.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cara Tavonbar? Tavonbar?
Hi.
Okay. Judith Kukier? Kukier? Sorry, Judith Kukier?
I just want to say that the project is three acres, and that's something that the appellant is omitting. The amount of dirt removing is less than fifteen percent in a hillside is like a scoop. If you compare proportion-wise to a small hillside lot, that wouldn't even require a haul route hearing, would be less than a thousand cubic yards. And in addition, there are four lots, and we are building only two homes. So I think it's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Yael Zell? So, Yael? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I think you already gave David Pilimer a card to your...
I'm sorry, is there Yael or Yab Zell?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Sandra Ben-Artzi?
I've lived in my home in Laurel Canyon since nineteen seventy-two. When I first moved to that area, there were no homes, and they've been building, 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 and there have been problems. There have been problems with slides. Anyone going up Laurel Canyon can see that they're holding the hill with plastic because the mountain is falling. When you carve into a hill like that, you're carving and taking away the earth. You can't put it back. It's dangerous. That hill is suffering as it is. Also, the homes that they're building, maybe only two, but one is going to be twelve thousand square feet, the other nine thousand square feet. They're huge, huge homes in an area where the homes are just normal-sized homes. So we are worried. We're homeowners, we've lived there forever. The deer are there, the birds are there, everything is being disrupted, and that's just an enormous project, and we are worried.
Thank you. Jean Lesser? Is Jean Lesser here?
In addition to some of the points that were made, there's the point of bonding. They proposed a four hundred thousand dollar bond. We've got about two or three dozen homes there on the lip of the hill, going into where they're going to be cutting away, and each of the homes are worth in excess of a million dollars apiece. That's a lot of money, and the bonding they propose won't even come close to covering any costs if there should be any hillslide or anything of that sort that affects the homes. But even, what's more dangerous is the hill that they're cutting happens to a but my place, and the soil there is very unstable. As a matter of fact, the fence, fences that we have up there, over the years, have moved along with the soil movement. And this is the area that they propose to cut in. Now, there's no way that I can be protected from that.
Thank you, sir. David Pilimer, if you'd like to come forward for, and he'll be afforded the same amount of time on the other side as the longer speaker as well. Please, if you put up five minutes, please. Thank you.
Your Honor, Mr. President, I understand that it was seven minutes that was given to Mr. Tuckmeyer.
I'm sorry, you're correct. It was two minutes before. So if you'd said it's seven minutes, to make that even? Thank you. Please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. I'm here to represent, my name is David Pilimer, and I'm here to represent Precision Development, the company that is working to construct the property in this instance. The property itself is a property that is not the, is four lots that are being divided into two, and two homes being built there. And if each lot were to be separately constructed, there would be no haul route requirement and no dirt permit required. But the main issue before us here is that the issue before this council is the permission to haul the dirt from the property. What we have heard here today has nothing to do mostly with the haul route. It has to do with issues and attempt to prevent my client from removing the, removing dirt and building on their property. They have raised a number of issues in their appeal, and one of the issues that they raised that there was an attempt by my client to circumvent CEQA. My client retained the services of a licensed civil engineer to do the calculations. The calculations were done and relied on by the city and my client. They are allowed to and should be allowed to rely on those calculations. There's no attempt by them to circumvent anything. They relied on it. If the civil engineer had said there would be more dirt to be removed, they would have applied for the applicable permits. They have been issued permits. They will comply with those permits. On the issue of smoking, my clients do not believe that they are required to prevent people from smoking. However, they will ask the workers on the property to hold down their smoking where possible. However, there is no city ordinance that specifically prevents people from smoking at a job site. They will do whatever they can to prevent any type of danger to the surrounding properties from smoke, or from fire. As far as the request that they have fire suppression equipment on the site, the fire department requires Precision Development to install a fire hydrant, a private fire hydrant. Once the framing permits are issued, they will do that. They will comply with that, and they will have whatever necessary fire equipment they are required to have by the city on the property. But they should not be required to have hoses that the fire department uses, which is not normal requirements of any other development. They will comply with whatever development requirements they are required to comply with through the city. There's also requirements that, or requests by the appellants that they have twenty-four-hour guards. Twenty-four-hour guards would be onerous on the defendants, or the respondents in this case, the developer. The developer will place and has placed a fence around the property to protect the property. The idea is that they do not want to have their property or their subcontractors' property stolen or vandalized, and therefore they were protected in that manner. But to require twenty-four-hour guards would be onerous and would prevent construction in Los Angeles if that were the requirement throughout the city. My clients will clean the streets as requested by them, as is required. They won't clean it as a stated broom clean. They will clean it, remove all the excess dirt. They will do what is necessary to keep this project clean. They will dampen down the site so that the dust is kept to a minimum. They will do whatever is necessary to keep this project livable and to not affect the neighbors as much as possible. However, they cannot be required to go in and clean the neighbors' homes. One of the big issues was the number of days for the haul route. The haul route presently allows them to have six days of haul route. They want to, the appellants want to reduce that to five. This would increase the burden on the city traffic, as Saturday is one of the lighter days of traffic, and by putting all the traffic on Monday through Friday, you would increase the burden and increase the time necessary probably to do that, to do the haul. One of the issues that they've raised is the parking. My clients have agreed to and will van pool the workers up to the site during the period of time of grading. However, once the grading is completed, my clients reserve the rights to have their workers park on the lot. This is a very narrow street leading up to this. The neighborhood is a congested neighborhood. To require the employees or the subcontractors or contractors to park off-site and have van pools running on a daily basis up to the work site would clearly be onerous, not only on my client, but also on the city and on the traffic and the neighbors. My clients intend to keep this project to a manageable project. They intend to work within the code, within the permit requirements of the city, and they should be entitled to do the construction work and to do the haul, the removal of dirt as is permitted by the permit that was granted. Basically, the, it is clear from what we have heard here today and from what has been presented to the City Council, that the idea by the neighbors is to prevent the construction of this project. They don't want it built. This motion before the City Council is clearly a motion in attempt to do that. The issue before this City Council is the haul route, which had previously and has, is approved by the Department of Building and Safety, and we would request that the City Council approve or continue to allow the approval of that haul route. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last two speakers, Joseph Hurwitz and Thomas Magyar. Good morning.
Good morning. The fact that the construction site at the corner of Laurel Canyon and Laurel Mount is presenting hardship on the whole area as far as traffic is concerned. There's no traffic light at that particular intersection, and a very long period of hauling and large quantities such as this for that construction would create havoc with the traffic, and I think that the council should reconsider the hauling route due to this fact, because Laurel Canyon is bad enough as it is, and if you would look at the map, you'll see that that particular intersection is especially difficult. So unless the construction is, the hauling is minimized and presented in another way, we would have a lot of tie-ups and traffic jams at that particular intersection. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thomas Magyar?
I'm one of the neighbors. I live above the property that's in, that we're talking about. One of my big concerns is, of course, that there have been landslides in the area, that this is a landslide zone. Our fences have been moving over the years, and this is a big concern, even though it was mentioned that a geotechnical engineer was hired to do this, to approve these plans or work these plans out. I'm still, since I live above this area, and there's nineteen thousand eight hundred cubic yards that be removed, I'm very concerned about this possibility. Plus, I also think that the plans for the structures that are, that I hear that they are rather large, over, you know, eight thousand to ten thousand square feet, that they should be approved before there will be any removal of soil or earth of that kind of size. So that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is anybody else who wishes to be heard? I mentioned a couple names before. Sir, if you'd just come up and state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Fred Innisman. I'm going to address the issue of the hauling permit. I live on the, a street adjacent to this property. It's McKin Court. It's McKinn. It's a very small street, a cul-de-sac. The plan, as I understand it, is that the trucks will now be allowed. We were led to believe that trucks would have to turn around another location. We have now been told that the trucks would be turning around on our small cul-de-sac for the next two years. This means our quiet little street, which we chose and has a significant value to us, will now have trucks on this quiet street for the next two years, six days a week, from 7:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon. I don't think any of the members of the council would like to live under those circumstances either. I think it's really important for the members of the council to realize how small a street this is. Laurel Mount is the exit point for the entire Mount Olympus area onto Laurel Canyon. If one car is parked there, no other it requires cars to pull to the side to allow other people to pass. To have trucks in this area will simply cause a tremendous, tremendous problem with traffic in the Mount Olympus area as it is one of the egress areas for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our public comment on this. We recognize the Chair of Plumb, Mr. Reyes, to be followed by Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, what's before us is an appeal filed by Joseph V. Tuckmire from the determination of the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners in approving an application to export 19,800 cubic yards of soil from property at 8195 and 8209 Laurel Mount Drive, subject to condition of approval. At its March 27, 2007 meeting, the Board of Building and Safety Commission adopted a proposed M and D prepared by the Planning Department and found that the measures as proposed will reduce any potential significant adverse effect to a level of insignificance and approval of all conditions specified in the department's report dated January 31, 2007, with three corrections. But I did want to ask the staff to come to the table. They have more language they want to introduce in coordination when Councilor Labanja's office to further enhance the mitigation and the impacts. And if you please introduce yourself and allow the council to understand what new language you have at the table.
Good morning. Rocky Wiles, Department of Building and Safety. In regards to the request that a grading that an inspector be retained at the expense of the owner to observe the hauling operations, the department understands that there is significant grading and that, you know, due to the temporary shoring and the topography of the lot, it would be we would go along with that recommendation. We just would like it to be a little more specific that a grading deputy inspector at the expense of the developer slash owner be on site during the hauling operations. So specifically during the hauling operations to to monitor the hauling operations. So that would be our recommendation and that you and that you approve the haul route. We believe the M and D is adequate in this case.
So colleagues, given the language being presented, given the work from the council office, I respectfully request support of this action, given the stated enhanced mitigations that have been articulated by the department.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. I want to welcome our friend and former Assemblymember Wally Knox to our council chambers as well. Nice to see Mr. Knox here and recognize Mr. Zine as our next speaker.
Yes, I have a question regarding issues of liability. In the event that something does occur, we've heard some some of the residents up there. Is the city going to be held liable or does the property owner assume all liability in the event of a situation? They talked about cigarette smoking and fires, et cetera. Is the city held liable or is that liability then with the property owner of the two parcels that we're talking about?
Well, I would defer that to our city attorney. I I believe that our conditions, the M and D conditions and the no parking during red flag days addresses those those concerns.
Well, the problem is we know that the signs are posted and people violate the signs. And the concern I have, and I'm familiar with that area, is that it is in an area which is very narrow. There's a lot of there has been slippage up there. If you travel up Laurel Canyon towards Mall and Drive, there was the house on the east side of the street that has collapsed. I think the remnants are still there. I'm just concerned that if because a lot of issues were brought forward by residents of the area that in the event something does occur, because they've asked issues about the fire department, issues about the access, ingress, egress, if something does occur, put the onus not on the City of Los Angeles, but on the developer, the builder. And if we could somehow include that in the in the proposal or the agreement that anything that occurs, since people do violate the rules, even though the rules are established for the public safety, that that landowner would be held responsible and not the City of Los Angeles.
Understood.
Mr. City Attorney, maybe you can respond to that. Are you with the City Attorney's Office?
Yes, this is a sign and shoe deputy city attorney.
And for the record, he just walked in. I just pulled him out of a meeting and so he may need to be up to put up the speed on your question, but the general question is regarding liability regarding this haul route.
I know it's about the haul route, but
Mr. Reyes may be able to answer that as well.
A lot of questions focused after the haul route and that's what I wanted to respond to.
Councilor Zine, I believe that today's action is specific to the haul route. The conditions to mitigate the kinds of concerns as far as slippage, engineering of the proposed changes on the lot have been reviewed by the staff and I believe all the necessary conditions have been applied to the best of our ability at this time. When you talk about people driving through there or throwing cigarette butts in dry areas, I think it's a more of a generic issue, a general issue that is hard to control on a haul route issue. But maybe the city attorney can respond more specifically.
And the hall and once again, the haul route issue was what's proposed, but all the issues that were brought up by residents is what triggered me to ask the questions in the event something were to occur, not the city to be liable, but for the particular person who's developing that property. That's the issue I have concern with.
If I can understand the question, the the question was before us here is the haul route conditions and
But it's been expanded from the questions raised by residents of the area who have voiced their concerns about safety regarding this particular lot being developed into two residents, issues that, you know, security guard and issues of the fire department and protection of the life and property there. Since they're all residents, I'm sure they're concerned about it. Their issues have sparked my interest to say liability in the event something happens, liability not with the City of Los Angeles, liability with the person who's doing that particular project.
Excuse me, Mr. Zine, regarding this particular item, it does involve the haul route appeal.
But other questions, Mr. City Attorney, other questions were raised that I want an answer to and I think it's appropriate since the people took the time to come down here that we answer those questions.
Right.
And we have a city attorney here who's answered those questions. I think it's really outrageous when we don't respond to the people's concerns who are living in those areas and we just use the it's a haul route and forget about the other issues because those folks have a responsibility. We have an obligation to them. So I'd like to have that answered.
Hello, Mr. Zine. Mr. City Attorney, if you could clarify the our liability issues on that and also our commitments under the state's agenda, under the Brown Act of things that are pursuant to what is on the agenda specifically.
Right. If I could clarify the councilman's question, the way I understand it, there are some issues being raised that are outside of what the appeal is actually about, which is the haul route and the CEQA clearance for the haul route. Now, with regard to, for instance, like safety issues or issues about fire impacts, which are not analyzed specifically in the CEQA document for the haul route, because the haul route is what the CEQA document specifically deals with, those issues are typically the ones that Building and Safety will deal with in terms of their building permits. And with regard to the fire issues, those are typically issues that the fire department will look at as part of the the general building permit process. So to the extent that there is a something something that needs to be dealt with on those grounds, that's how to how we would typically handle it. What's before us today on the haul route, again, the CEQA document will specifically deal with the haul route because that is the discretionary approval that's before council. So to the extent that those issues are raised, again, the CEQA document would deal with that in the same way that it's the same way that the Building and Safety Department would deal with it as a normal building permit and that's how it's taken care of.
And yeah, just a final question. Those other permits haven't been requested yet. We're just at the haul permit. We haven't asked, they haven't asked for the other permits.
Yes, and let me clarify it. It's a haul route approval. It's not a haul route permit. The approval is necessary in order to obtain any other to obtain the permits to develop the site. This is why the plans haven't been approved. We we're not at that stage yet.
Okay, so the concern voiced by the public that is here today, their questions and those issues will be resolved at a later time when other process takes place.
Absolutely. We won't issue the permits unless the project complies with code and
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Cardens.
So that people don't get too happy, the council member used the term that their issues will be resolved at future hearings on other permit processes. Now, their other issues will be heard, correct? Now, whether or not they're resolved is a total other matter because that's subject to interpretation, correct?
Not entirely. They from this point on, as I understand the project as of right now, this is the only discretionary action that is required. So prior to issuance of the permit, because it's a by right project, there won't be any other hearings if that is what you're referring to. I mean, we we have all their concerns in writing and we will, you know, absolutely take them into account, but there won't be any other types of hearings.
So there won't be any other required hearings?
As far as I know at this point, no. This is the only discretionary action required.
Okay. Unfortunately, because we have angry people here and they're probably even more disappointed from what the answer they just heard, can you please explain, be it the city attorney or somebody from planning, can you explain what you mean by by right? That's a term that we use in this city very much, but maybe a person, an Angelino who's here, might not exactly understand the legality of the term by right. Can you please explain that?
Okay. Do you want to touch that or you can go on? Well, the simplest way to look at it is we have a code and if you comply with all the requirements that are stated in the code, then you can basically develop your site as long as the height, for instance, yards, parking, if it's what is required in the code, then you can go ahead and get your permit. However, if you at any time you don't comply with any of those requirements, if you're going to build your house, you know, a foot, an inch, two inches taller than what the code limits, then you would need to ask for a approval via, in this case, it would be the Department of City Planning and that is a discretionary action. And those are the times when the public can come and comment.
Okay. So so basically by right has to do with this is real estate property privately owned and in this country and in the City of Los Angeles, it's no exception, people have a right to develop that piece of property, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So just because somebody may feel aggrieved or impacted does not mean that we, the government, can literally take away that person's right to do development, at least within the confines of what they should be allowed to based on the zoning of that piece of real estate, correct?
Absolutely. Couldn't ask that better myself.
Well, I'm saying that because it's not obvious to everybody that in this country with our rights comes some uncomfortableness, be it neighbors, be it the community at large or what have you. Now, I need you to also explain for for the public's benefit, if we were to go beyond our rules and responsibilities and actually take away somebody's deny somebody's by right ability on their real estate property, I'm going to say this, technically, we could do that. Technically, we could do that, but there would be recourse by that property owner, correct? And what is the term that that property owner would use in the court of law, a simple term that they will say that what we did to them?
Well, councilman.
Starts with a T and it's a simple word.
That's correct. It would possibly be considered a taking and
Now, can you please explain what a taking is? Because, excuse me, because when I hear of somebody taking something, it's like if my mother were walking down the street and somebody took her purse, that is a taking, okay? But here we're talking about a piece of real estate, yet we didn't take their real estate from them, correct? We didn't like steal their dirt. Their dirt still belongs to them, correct, in the taking incident, correct?
Right, right. And if you're in the case that you're describing, that would be considered a regulatory taking if certain conditions are met. Under the United States and California Constitution, government has eminent domain right to take private property on payment of just compensation. However, in certain circumstances, if you impose regulations that deprive the substantial use of your of a private person's property, then that could constitute an instance of a regulatory taking, in which case it's almost it's equivalent to taking by eminent domain. You would have to compensate the private owner.
Okay, so taking is a technical term that would be used in a court of law. If we didn't, if a person wanted to sue us and they were successful in saying that we denied them their their rights within our own rules in this city to actually develop their piece of real estate, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I wanted to go over that because I think I take it it's wrong for people to come to this body, this legislative body, and think that we are all powerful and that we do things willy-nilly and that we don't have confines. There's a balance of power in this country and we are a legislative body of this municipal city, but we do not have all the power. If we step out of bounds and if we were to grant or to receive a group of people and make them happy for a little while, sooner or later, the courts are just going to overturn that anyway and we all look like a bunch of dummies because what we've done is we've just made a mockery of our own system. So I wanted to point that out because we are listening, we are paying attention and we are trying to do the best within the confines and rights that people have to their real estate property. That's why I went through this dialogue with our experts here in the city so that hopefully people then understand that we are trying our best to try to get down to the bottom of doing what's right by the property owners and the community at large. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Again, colleagues, thank you, Councilor Cardens, for that lesson, our planning 101. But Councilor Labanja unfortunately cannot be here because of time constraints. We have to act today. We did allow for the public hearing. We did hear both sides of the issue. We've heard the amendments. So with that, I'd like for us to vote on this matter and essentially adding the condition to the haul route and deny the appeal by the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Anybody else wishing to be heard in the council? Seeing none, that amendment, if there's no objection, will be accepted as a friendly amendment. And let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Reyes had requested something on order, I think.
I was going to just ask, we have item 20. We've already had public hearing. I just want to make an amendment to it and I think it can go forward. I think Mr. Rosengal would be fine with that.
Do you want to do that orally?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll be really quick, I promise, Mr. Reyes. This is on item number 20, colleagues. On amend recommendation for, this is on the Wilshire Bus Lane, that the department will report back in 45 days on item number four and that on item number three on the half a half million dollars that we actually have a have DOT return to us as well with the funding source identified prior to going out to RFP for the community outreach. And otherwise, we did have a very big discussion in our committee hearing the other day and have staff here. So I want to, before we, next one I know will be long. So I'd just like to move approval with those amendments.
Great, thank you. We had a public hearing unless somebody reopens it, the the public hearing was in committee. As explained at the outset of the meeting, we either have all all items receive either public hearing in committee or council and council if they haven't had one in committee, unless there's a reopening of that. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Is there any objection to the amendments that are made? Let me read into the record the folks that were here. David Pettit, Francisco Porches, Chris Cost, Judy Redman, Dehan Song, Melrose Larry Green, Pat Etum, Carol Inhe or Inge, excuse me, Maria Esther Tejada. With that as amended, there's nobody else wishing to be heard in the council? If there's no move to reopen the public hearing, then we'll open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved as amended. Ms. Perry?
Very much, Mr. President.
Without objection forthwith.
Is okay. I just wanted to ask these students from Hoover Elementary School to stand up. They're here in the chamber and they are taking a tour of City Hall, learning about their city and I want to welcome them. I think we have a what, about 60 students here? I think we have, what, about sixty students here? So I'd like to give them a big hand and welcome them to the council chamber. And thank you for waiting. I hope you were very interested in what we did here today and enjoy your tour. They're really waving.
All right. We've had a request by Mr. Reyes to take special twenty-three, Rule 23, out of order. Mr. City Attorney on the findings?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Last evening, there was a disturbance involving the Los Angeles Police Department at MacArthur Park. Immediate action is required to obtain a briefing from the LAPD, to allay any concerns regarding LAPD actions, to address any future actions of the LAPD, and to request the department to report back to council. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Any comments on the findings? Okay. If not, do you have a question on the findings, Mr. Smith? Sorry.
Yes, please explain to me again the urgency.
The urgency, as I summarized, were to obtain a briefing from the LAPD regarding the incident last night, to allay any concerns regarding the LAPD actions, to address any future LAPD actions, and to request the department to report back to council.
It's the same as the fire department issue a couple of weeks ago. I don't think there's an urgency here and I want to hear about this, but I think it should be regularly scheduled, agenda item, and let the police department come forward after the chief has had a chance to investigate. He just said a couple of hours ago he has not had a chance to investigate this matter and I don't think we'll learn anything today that can't be done in a properly noticed public meeting.
Okay. I have several people who have now pressed their button. This is on the findings. So, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilor President. One, what occurred last night has been very upsetting, very disconcerting to a large population in the city. Two, the fragility of our ability to maintain a level of order, the type of impact it's making on our committees today, especially in Pico Union, especially in neighborhoods of MacArthur Park, an area that we work very hard to maintain a level of cooperation and peace with the police officers, requires that we address what is in the motion today. The motion itself is asking and allowing for the type of respect that the jurisdictions that are before us legally have in place. We're asking for a report back in thirty days, but I think it's an issue that we need to address today on the floor so that our community throughout Los Angeles, especially those who are impacted, especially those who march for their rights, be addressed today. The urgency is such that I would hate to see more incidents occur in the next few days. We have the kind of environment that we need to quell, we need to make it peaceful, and we need to let people know that this issue is a significant issue and we are addressing it in the most constructive manner possible.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss, Ms. Perry, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Weesar.
On the findings.
On the findings of us hearing it today.
On the findings. Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I agree very strongly with Mr. Reyes. I also, to my friend, Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, I also, I also thought the findings were pretty good for that fire motion last week, but anyway, you win some, you lose some, but I, I'm consistent at least. Yeah, that's right. But, you know, earlier this morning, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weesar, and I spoke with the Chief of Police, Chief Bratton, about this motion. The chief indicated that he thought it was appropriate and that he had no concerns with this body going ahead. Indeed, as we discussed with the chief, this motion does not contemplate bringing the police department to the table at this moment to answer questions. It's my understanding the chief is going to assemble as many facts as he can and get them out to the public later today. The purpose of this motion is, just as Mr. Reyes said, to show the community that this council is just as concerned as the community is about what happened and that this council intends to work with all the investigating bodies to vindicate the rights of the community and to assure that the facts are brought out right away. That was the purpose that Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weesar had in drafting this motion, and I think we should hear it today and take the directions that are stated in the motion.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to rise in support of Mr. Reyes and his request to hear this today. The incident yesterday highlights the fragile nature and the balance that we have to strike in the districts that we represent, which in many cases are very different than the types of districts that other people represent, and I think it's incumbent upon us to be extremely responsive in a deliberative and transparent and open manner on the record so that we can use this as an opportunity to educate those who would be listening so that we can get a full grasp, a full, complete, and timely grasp of what occurred.
Mr. Zine.
The way I read this motion, it's asking that the police commission be requested to report back in thirty days, that this meeting is not today, but that police commission report back in thirty days. Is that the issue or are we going to hear this today? On the findings. The findings, I agree we need to have the report brought back, but it's talking about the police commission, and I would say that motion needs to have the Chief of Police, not the police commission, report to this body on the results of that as far as the findings. I think that the police commission is policymakers, but the people who give direction to the officers, the Los Angeles Chief of Police and his command staff. So as far as the findings, the question is, police commission or Chief of Police and his designee who are at that site who gave those directives to the officers who carried through with what they were ordered to do.
Again, I was...
So I need clarification on this. As far as the findings, it says the police commission. I don't think, I have no problem with the police commission coming forward, but I think we need to have the Chief of Police and his command staff that was at the site come forward on the findings.
Well, how do we get... Mr. Zine, I believe your inquiry is more as to the substance of the motion itself.
Well, we're discussing the findings of the motion. How do we...
We're discussing whether or not, so why don't you just clarify what Rule 23, the findings require.
Right, right. Council must make findings whether there's an immediate need to act and that the matter came to the attention of council since the posting of the agenda. The second one is easily met, and this is, council is discussing whether there's an urgency. And as I stated, or as I summarized, that the urgent need to act is to allay any concerns regarding LAPD actions, and Mr. Reyes addressed that himself, to address any future actions.
And I agree with what Mr. Reyes and my other colleagues say. I just think it's appropriate that we have the Chief of Police.
If I may, I see no problem asking the Chief of Police and the command staff to be here if that's going to allow us to move forward on this discussion. I've just got an understanding that they are willing, that it's an issue that they are willing to comply with, and they will be here.
Okay. Now, my question on the findings, are we talking about doing this today? Are we talking about doing this thirty days from now?
Today.
I believe both.
I thought it's a day.
So we have the, so what I'm asking for on the findings is that we have the Chief of Police and the command staff that was at that site appear before us.
If I could, if I could just, just to clarify...
Mr. Weiss, you need to probably, unless he wants to give you your time.
Just again, to be very clear, in thirty days, we would ask the chief and the command staff to come in thirty days so we could have this discussion.
So we're not doing it today?
No.
We're directing it. We're directing today.
I understand that. Okay. So the urgency is we're asking them to come back in thirty days, not today. So we could have done this for the regular motion. I mean, the urgency, so the urgency is we want to report within thirty days versus it's urgent that we hear from them right now.
If I may...
I'm just trying to find the urgency if we're going to have thirty days to come back and report on this.
My interpretation of the urgency and how it meets the Brown Act's requirements is that there's an urgent need to allay any concerns in the community.
Right, right.
To let the community know that city council is aware of the issue and that city council is acting on this, and in the future, will rectify anything that needs to be rectified.
And then they'll report back in thirty days?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Weesar.
Thank you very much. And yes, we cannot have the Chief of Police here today or the police commission because they are in fact now gathering all the facts, doing their investigation, conducting their investigation. But the fact is that it's time like these that our residents, our community, are looking to the leadership of this city, whether or not we will look into this issue seriously or not. Some people may have looked at the clips last night on television and thought, that's no big deal. Others are very concerned, afraid, and want something to be done. The urgency is that we need to step up, show that we are taking this seriously and we're going to look at this thoroughly because if we don't, there's a possibility that other incidents such as the one we saw last night on the TV clips may occur again. Colleagues, I don't want that on my conscience. I don't want to see anybody else get hurt and I don't want anything to happen in this city that does not, or will be perceived as, not taking into account any particular population of this city. I think there's an urgency. We should act today. I wish we could have the Chief of Police here today. I wish we could have the police commission, but we need to give them some time to conduct their investigation and come back to us and tell us what they found.
Thank you. And the findings? No. Okay. So we're clear on all the findings issues. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Okay. That item is now before us. Now, if we could clear it, thank you. I think I'd like to go to the maker of the motion, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilor President. First, I want to thank my colleague, Councilor Weesar, and Councilor Weiss colleagues for their support in this effort. I wanted to approach this constructively. This is about bringing peace in our neighborhoods. It's also about learning from our mistakes. It's very disconcerting to see what happened last night, knowing that there were children, there were families, there were folks who were out there trying to give an American message, a message that says that the communities, all communities, regardless of race, color, income group, should be treated with respect, and they are fighting for their justice. It's as basic as that. But when you have a situation that deteriorates to the degree that it did, where some people fell into harm's way, we need to figure out how we prevent these types of incidents from occurring again. In speaking with the chief, in speaking with the Chair of Public Safety, in speaking with my colleague, Councilor Weesar, who also has a large immigrant community in his district, it is very clear that the leadership in the community is very concerned as to how this transpired. We need to give them answers. We need to give them a venue where they can vent. We need to understand how we can enhance our relationship with our men and women in blue. They are outnumbered, they are outgunned, and we need to provide a level of information that provides confidence and support so that our women and children, our families, can be safe in every neighborhood in the city. But I don't want to lose sight of the purpose of this march. The purpose of the march was to talk about freedom, rights, civil rights, all the struggles this country has known as it has evolved into a more balanced society. Some may say we have much farther to go, but from my point of view, our leadership, our role as council, this institution, requires that we ask for this report back, that we have a discussion on the tactics, how we can modify our approach, and how we can prevent this incident from occurring again. So I ask for your support and I vote on this motion, and I believe it can only make our city healthier, it can create an environment where a very fragile social infrastructure that exists in poverty-stricken areas and dense areas need to be improved. So with that, I ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weesar, Mr. Weiss. I've been in close contact with the mayor colleagues and with the chief throughout the last twenty-four hours or the last probably sixteen hours on this. I know I've briefed, been able to brief a number of you and just got the latest briefing from deputy mayor as well, while the mayor's out of town, to make sure that we're coordinating all of our, of our, of our actions on this. I will be speaking later on today, so I'll just be brief and invite members to join us when we're doing a more formal briefing for the press later this afternoon. But I want to say two things. One, free media is the cornerstone of our democracy and it is important for us to protect that. Two, the right to assemble is also a cornerstone of our democracy. And three, we had over five thousand LAPD employees who were out yesterday, close to five thousand, the most we've probably deployed at any given time, including during the Los Angeles riots. And we had up into the point yesterday evening, twenty-five thousand protesters and close to five thousand police officers without incident. And that is very important for us to not only say, but to recognize the important work of those that were assembling, to hear their voices heard on, as Mr. Reyes said, the matter that was really at hand and still remains at hand long after we resolve what happened last night at the very end, but also for our hard-working city employees, not just police officers, but firefighters, street services, and other people who assisted in protecting that right to assemble. The third hallmark of our democracy, though, is openness, and I want to thank the chief for, this wouldn't have necessarily triggered the involvement of the police commission or the inspector general because it was not a categorical use of force, which is either life-threatening or serious permanent damage. But nevertheless, it is a hallmark of what we do to say that this will be an open process so that we can be as thorough in getting to the bottom of what happened and whether the policy that was engaged was proper and whether it was something that should have been undertaken. Was not just police that we need to look at investigating, we ask members of the public who were either attacked by members who were looking to provoke at the end of these marches yesterday and rallies, as well as those who may have had interactions with the police department. As we conduct this investigation, your input will be critical and we will be releasing those numbers later today to help people out with that. I know one march organizer who was attacked by one of the provocateurs himself and got a bottle to the head, as well as some of the members of the press that we saw in very stark video yesterday. This city council, together with the mayor, will get to the bottom of this. We appreciate the opportunity to hear that report back as the investigation proceeds, and I want to thank the chief and Los Angeles Police Department for stepping forward to make sure that we do this in a thorough and as deep manner as we can. But again, that right to make sure that our friends in the media can have their jobs protected and done in a safe and democratic way is important, the right of people to assemble and not to be intimidated by anybody, whether that's in official capacity or whether that's private individuals, we will continue to protect that. So thank you all very much for the opportunity and we'll be having more information later today.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I'd like to add that the Chief of Police be directed to bring the command staff that was in charge of the location, MacArthur Park. I don't know if it was deputy chiefs, commanders, captains, but there's a command staff in structure, there's a command staff structure that's in charge, it gives the direct order on what to do and how to do it. You don't see officers running around with ballistic helmets and bean bags and dressed with the face shields on a routine basis. So in addition to the Chief of Police, who, I don't know if he was there or not, I know I was not at the site, I don't know if any of my colleagues were at that site, but I think it's important that the command staff that made that decision be here to answer our questions. The police commission, the policymakers, it's fine to have them here, but we need to discuss this with the individuals who gave the order to disperse the crowd and how to disperse them and what weapons the officers were going to use or not use. I think it's important that we find from their state of mind, the chief can talk from his perspective, the police commission can talk about policy, but we need to interview and be able to question whoever was in charge, is the incident commander, to find out what led to that situation which brought that confrontation between the police and the demonstrators.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Because as the motion states, it talks about police commission, it's a broader scope. I'm sure the police commissioners didn't give the direct order, whoever gave that direct order, who was in charge. Someone's in charge of that scene. We need that person to come forward and answer the questions.
As a friendly amendment, we will ask the chief and the command staff on-site to come and participate in the report as requested.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
I want to rise and commend Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weesar, not only for bringing the motion forward, but for how they brought it forward. The first people I spoke to this morning when I got to council was Mr. Reyes, and the first words out of his mouth were, "I don't want to politicize this. I want to be very measured and constructive in how we go about this. We need to respond on behalf of the community, but we need to do it in a measured and constructive way." That is what both of you have done, and I appreciate it, and people in the city should appreciate it because it is important that we get to the bottom of it. It's important that the civilian authorities in the city remain the ultimate authorities in the city, not folks in uniform, but folks who are directly democratically accountable to the citizens. At the same time, it's important that it be done in a responsible way, and that's just what you've done, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weesar. And many folks on this council have already spoken with the... And many folks on this council have already spoken with the chief this morning, as you have, as Mr. Weezer has, as I have, as the Council President has, and it is very clear that we have a chief who is determined to get to the bottom of it and get the facts out immediately. We have an LAP, this is not your father's LAPD and it's not your father's chief. They are responding quickly and in a desire to get all the facts out right away and I very much appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that the motion that has been put forward does not prejudge what happened in any way. It does not prejudge the actions of any LAPD officers. Indeed, colleagues, as you well know, this rally yesterday was something that the LAPD and various city departments had been working on for months. Hundreds and hundreds of city personnel have worked very hard to make sure that what happened yesterday occurred and occurred appropriately. So clearly, we're talking about the actions of a small number of people towards the end of a very long and busy day. But as our council president pointed out just a few moments ago, there is, it was an American rally that happened yesterday. There is no more American right than the right to assemble, than the right to protest, than the right to report the news. We want to make sure that this is a city in which those rights are continually protected and cherished and that's exactly the purpose of your motion, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Madam President. First and foremost, I want to thank and commend the thousands and thousands of people who were out there in a very peaceful demonstration throughout the day that, given the circumstances, it was a peaceful demonstration and unfortunately it happened to end up the way it did and unfortunately, given that there were similar marches throughout the country, that Los Angeles was the only one that got the national news that something like this ended up on our streets. I want to also say that what we saw last night in the video clips and what we're hearing about, you know, a lot of goodwill has been built up by our LAPD, it's becoming a bit more diverse and in fact, one of the priorities of our chief for this following years is to build better community relationships. However, last night when I saw the news, I did cringe, I was disturbed to see families running from officers, to see babies being held in their arms as they ran across a dirt field, to see journalists rolling around on the dirt and then a camera being kicked. That is not what Los Angeles is about. I am pleased to know after discussions with our chief that there will be a forum by which people can come forward, express themselves, provide witness testimony so that we can have an airing of these issues and ensure that something like this does not happen again, that our policies in these types of situations are reviewed, examined, and improved and that if anybody did deliberately move away from policies as to how they're supposed to conduct themselves, that they are held accountable. And similarly, anybody who provoked these incidents, that we get them, bring them to justice because, as we all know, sometimes in these situations, it is a small number of people who actually provoke these types of situations. I hope and I, that we get this investigation done in time for our 30-day timeline. Hopefully it will, but we have gotten a lot of cooperation from the Chief of Police and I also wanted to commend Weiss and Councilmember Ed Reyes for working on this motion today and for the willingness to move forward on this quite quickly. I did want to have, I had a, I wanted to clarify something, Madam Chair. The amendment that was made that is to ask the Chief of Police and the commanding officer onsite to come as well to present their findings, the Police Commission findings. What if there is other investigations other than a Police Commission investigation? Should we amend this to say any investigations conducted by the Police Department and the Police Commission or should we just come have Police, should Chief of Police and commanding officer come testify on the Police Commission's report?
Mr. Kardas, followed by Mr. Reyes and then Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine, do you want to clarify that for him?
The Chief of Police will have all the reports, they will all go to him, the use of force reports, all the reports will funnel up the chain of command to the Chief of Police. So the Chief of Police will be able to have all that information, will be able to answer those, ask those questions and the concern is the command staff, the incident commander, we need that individual here, but the chief will have all the documentation and it'll all be sent up to him eventually. So by the 30 days, which we give them a timeframe to get it done, I don't think we have to order anyone else here but direct that those folks come by because he will have access and receive all those documents.
Mr. Kardas.
Clarification first of all on that friendly amendment. Now that was having those command staff who were present in addition to the Police Chief, right? It's not in lieu of.
The Chief of Police was at the site, but whatever command staff, Assistant Chief, Deputy Chief, Commander, whatever, who said, "Suit up, here's form a skirmish line, disperse the crowd," gave the dispersal order, someone in command gave that direction. That person, we need to have here to answer the questions. The Chief of Police may not even been there, but whoever was there, and I don't think the chief gave the direction, if he did, that's unusual, normally it's someone who's incident commander. There's always, there's always the staff officers who give that, you can't use that type of skirmish line with those types of non-lethal weapons without direct command from command staff. So they'll be able to be here and answer those questions, what was the state of mind, et cetera, and I'm sure there'll be a number of questions by us to resolve that and it'll be done in a 30-day period of time. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that all come forward.
Thank you for clarifying that because I certainly wouldn't want to dilute the motion in any way and we haven't.
We want to make it more inclusive.
Exactly. I just wanted to clarify that so nobody is, misunderstands what the full motion is. But I would like to also thank Councilmember Reyes, whose district this incident took place in, but this is our city as a whole and it's unfortunate when incidents like this happen. And, but I think it's fortunate that this council as a whole has kept down the rhetoric, not to politicize this, but to take the responsibility, as I said, as a whole, not, but to take responsibility of making sure that we are part of the governmental process here and we deserve to have answers to many things that go on in this city and this should not be an exception. I want to participate in making sure that, that we do have those proper presentations, be it if we have to go into closed session or what have you, so be it. But I think that we need to be apprised of that. We are not directly in charge of this Police Department. They do have a Police Commission, but they do answer to the council to a certain degree and I think it's important when it involves our constituencies, be it the people who are from the press or be it the people who are actually demonstrating and also the constituency of the police officers who are present as well. I think everybody deserves to get clarity on what occurred, why it occurred, and to find out if in fact any actions need to take place. The reason why I clarify that is because right now, whether we like it or not, there are a lot of rumors going around in the public and there are a lot of rumors going around in many, many languages. And when people come to this country and they demonstrate in this country, they need to be treated as equals, they need to be treated as human beings regardless of what they wear, regardless of what they're saying, regardless of what they are doing. If they're demonstrating, that is a right in this country. We do not take that right away by intimidation. We do not take that right away by allowing people to misunderstand that they don't have that right. So I think it's important in this body as much as we can that we discuss this matter in open session as much as we can and also to demonstrate to the people that they do have elected officials who represent everybody in the city of Los Angeles, not just voters and not just citizens, but every single person who is in this city has equal rights and are represented equally. And this body is a representation of everybody in this city, not just voters and not just citizens. And that's one of the reasons why I think it's important that we hear as much of this as we can in this body.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I want to commend this council, in particular, our colleagues who brought forth this motion. There are a lot of people that are looking to us to do something and to do it quickly in a timely fashion. When you think about everybody that's here, we're all descendants of immigrants. I mean, some of us, most of us by choice, some of us by chance, because we were just relatives in the wrong place at the wrong time. This country was basically created because people wanted to protect their freedom of speech and they wanted to be able to assemble. And I think we have a responsibility to let Los Angelinos know that we're committed to protect their rights. I, for one, had a flashback of over 60 years ago, I mean, 45 years ago. It was a nightmare to me to, if there were dogs available, I would have thought that this great city of Los Angeles had been transported to Mississippi in the mid-'60s. That's not what we're about here. I find it hard to believe that the media, which some of us have differences of opinion with the media from time to time, that it just makes no sense to me that you would go up to an individual with a camera and take that camera and throw it away. There are so many questions that need to be answered and we have the responsibility as elected to ask those questions. I'm very proud, as the other 14 members are, of our Police Department. We've worked well with them and I'd have to say, given the resources that they have, they're probably one of the best, if not the best, in the nation. But something went wrong yesterday. I'm proud that the chief said quickly, some inappropriate actions took place and I'm going to investigate this to see exactly what happened. It's important for us to send the message that as leaders of this city, that we want to get to the bottom of this. Because I'm telling you, based on the conversations that I've had with people, I'd have to disagree with you, Councilman Weezer, anybody that's saying was disturbed by what they saw yesterday. I haven't had a discussion with one individual that has said, "Oh, it makes sense to me." We had families in that park, with children in that park, and we have to make sure that we get to the bottom of this. So I commend you, I support this and will do ever, anything that I can to ensure that we find out what happens, we fix it to make sure that this never, ever occurs again. Like I said, I had a flashback yesterday and this morning when I watched it over and over again and trust me, it is a flashback that I don't ever want to have again.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. When the demonstrators came to City Hall, I went out and I spoke and I spoke from the heart. My parents are immigrants and I know what it's like to be an immigrant, but being white, you know, you just kind of get a pass automatically as if you've lived here for hundreds of years. But I am the son of immigrants, my mother was a maid, my father cleaned toilets and that's how they started in this great nation of ours, as did many of the people that were out in the march yesterday, come here for a path to citizenship. So I spoke and I spoke strongly in favor of the democracy and the process. But obviously, when you saw the YouTube, it was on the computer, I pushed the buttons and there it was. We don't know what we really saw because we know cameras. I know more about cameras than most people, having done a lot with television over the years. We don't really know the facts and the truth. And so the motion we have before us gives that opportunity to really address it, it gives the police the opportunity to really investigate it and the Citizen Oversight Committee. So I just want to rise and say that if in fact what was perceived to be seen is the case, we'll get to the bottom of it and our process will get to the bottom of it. And I know our acting mayor, Mr. Mayor Garcetti, that this afternoon, in your role representing all of us, will get whatever insight there is from last night and then we'll go forward and we as a council will deliberate over this whole set of circumstances in the near future. And I thank my colleagues for the robust discussion. We're all in shock and we don't know if we stay in shock or come out of it, but it is the moment and it's less than 24 hours since it happened, so calm and coolness is really where we need to be at this point. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, did you, I was going to let Mr. Reyes speak last, we do have one public speaker, but Mr. Zine, did you want to say anything before?
I want to add a couple more comments. I received a call last evening from my son, who's a motorcycle officer of South Traffic and he was part of the contingency that responded. And there's another side to the story that's not being told. There are police officers that were attacked, a motorcycle supervisor was knocked off his motorcycle by one of the demonstrators. So while we have police officers that were obviously injured and attacked by some of the demonstrators, most of the people were in compliance. There's the few that demonstrate, they want to take their aggression out on police officers and there was a motor sergeant who was knocked off his motorcycle by a demonstrator. And when a situation gets to that point, obviously something has to be done to protect the lives and the safety of our police officers. So we're going to hear from the chief and from the command staff as to why the order was given, how they were deployed. But again, there's another side to the story that isn't being told and it's about the police officers that we always talk about, we need more police officers, protect Los Angeles. If any overreaction took place and as Councilmember Parks knows and Councilmember Smith knows, since we both served in that organization for many years, there's consequence for that action. But there's also the side for the police officers that were there, deployed there to maintain safety and security for that particular area. Thank you.
We have both Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weiss. Would you like to hear a public comment before, we have just one public comment card? Okay. Thank you. Melrose Larry Green.
I cannot believe what I'm hearing, except for what you just said, Councilman Zine. And a lot of you are my friends and this is not about friends. First of all, it is not a right, when you're demonstrating, to throw bottles and projectiles, bottles filled with ice at LAPD. That is not part of freedom of speech. Secondly, this is a mountain out of a molehill. You are playing into the hands of the provocateurs right now by giving this such high priority treatment and the media is playing into the hands of the provocateurs. This is what they want, a few bad apples who wanted trouble. Do you want people throwing bottles at you? Are you going to sit back and take it? Do you want an LAPD that's going to be inert? I'm a member of the community. I don't think they overreacted. And whatever happened to innocent and proven guilty? And Bill Bratton, of course he could be here right now. And everybody in their mind with a high school education knows that Bill Bratton could be here right now, he's about 200 yards from here. And I can't believe that I'm hearing this from friends of mine. This is not overreaction. I was there yesterday and no matter what you do in this city council, you will never bank back the rank and file of the LAPD as a group. This is not part of freedom of speech. This has nothing to do with America. You don't have the right to be a hooligan, you don't have the right to be a thug. Now you look at the videotapes and you'll see that these thugs provoked our police and their lives were in jeopardy and nobody overreacted, nobody got hurt, 15 cops were wounded. 15 cops, that's from today's LA Times.
Close this public comment. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Again, this effort is about safety, this effort is about bringing peace, this effort that we are going through right now is about embracing our responsibility as a council to show the type of leadership that gives that message, that we are concerned for our children, we are concerned for our families, we are concerned for our men and women in blue and their safety and that we need to reinforce the fact that as council representatives, as elected officials, we want to know who will be held accountable for what happened yesterday. But just as important is to recognize that in this city today, we have high levels of poverty, we have high levels of concern with the dropout rates of our kids, there are social ills that impact the condition of our communities that is a reflection of the type of temperament that we see out there. And it behooves us to improve our relationship with our police officers, it behooves us to instill confidence in our leaders in the community, to have a brighter future for our city. So again, I thank you for your input, for your diligence and I hope by the end of this process, come next year, we will have a much better approach and we'll be prepared to deal with these kinds of tactics. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve eyes. Thank you. That item's been approved. Next item.
Item fifteen was called special by Councilmember Weisar.
Mr. Weisar.
Madam President, can I have... Is there someone here from the LAPD and the City Attorney's Office that could step up to the table, please, on this item? First of all, I want to thank the Los Angeles Police Department and the City Attorney's Office and the Information Technology Agency for quickly responding to my motion for creating a very valuable asset that's going to bring more safety to all the residents in the city of Los Angeles. They have put together a comprehensive database on sex offenders in the city of Los Angeles that will be available to our law enforcement officials so that they have a better source of information to go to in the event they come across an individual that happens to be a sex offender that may be in violation of their parole conditions. I introduced this motion back in July of two thousand and six, when I realized, after an incident in my district, that your everyday beat cop on the street did not have access immediately to these number of databases that would help that officer more effectively do their job. This database puts together eleven separate databases in different formats. Well, currently, we have eleven separate databases in different formats. This database, known as the 290 database, named after Megan's Law, the code that codified Megan's Law and the state law, will allow now for these eleven separate databases to talk to each other, converse with each other, and have that information available so that we could better track those sex offenders that may potentially be in violation of their parole. So thank you again, and let me start with the City Attorney's Office or whoever would want to start the LAPD. Can you just... I mean, I talked a little bit about us, but can you tell us a little bit about the benefits of this 290 database? Please hold my time.
Sure. Good afternoon. Thank you very much for having us. First of all, I'd like to say we appreciate your leadership on this issue. We look forward to augmenting this database further in conjunction with your office as well. In brief, the eleven separate databases you mentioned, yes, as you mentioned, have become one. And the benefit of this is, instead of having a variety of different databases that weren't accessible to other parts of the city, you know, if a officer in the valley wanted to know something or had a 290 registrant that was recently transferred to his division from, say, Central, they would not have had the seamless transition of that information. And now, of course, it's all accessible to all officers who are on the React unit, and I'm sure the LAPD can explain further. But that is the first fundamental improvement that we have reached, is that this is now seamless information, and in addition, we can put in a lot of other kinds of information that were not necessarily available. We went through a process of about a year of a series of meetings where we discussed a variety of different best practices, if you will, what was working in different divisions and what wasn't. And from these best practices, we have now this 290 database whereby you can now search by everything from their vehicle to their physical characteristics up and into including a tattoo that may be on just the left arm. You can search that specifically. So it helps not only the 290 officers who required to take information on a yearly basis at minimum from these registrants to, you know, maintain their tracking of them, but in addition can help sex crime detectives solve crimes. And from the city attorney's perspective as well, we are now able to understand, in terms of nuisance properties, as an example, all over the city. We'll have a better understanding of these problems because we'll know if we have sex offenders that are there, and as you also mentioned, whether or not they are or are not on parole, which might affect our dealing with that property. With that, I'll hand it off to the LAPD.
Thank you. One final question before we go to the LAPD. I understand that the City Attorney's Office, with their safety prosecutors around schools, they're going to use this quite more often now since one of the primary responsibilities is to protect children around our schools. And can you elaborate on that, please?
Yes, Councilmember, absolutely. One of the first success stories we had with the database actually is directly on point. We were able to identify a school that was opening up down in Wilmington, and there were approximately a little over thirty sex offenders that were in a location that would have been in that prohibited area around that school. So absolutely, we were able to identify that, realize that was a problem, and in fact, coming from that, we've now created a protocol with the LAUSD so that they are notifying not only the LAPD but also the Department of Corrections and Parole that, hey, these are where we're opening up new schools. Be aware of this. Do not place parole these sex offenders in and around these locations. So it has even had positive byproducts, you know, dealing with other entities and further collaboration to make sure that that sort of thing doesn't happen anymore.
Thank you very much.
I'm Detective Diane Webb, and I'm the program coordinator for our LAPD sex offender program. And this database has helped us to focus our efforts in enforcing registration requirements for registered sex offenders throughout our city, and it also serves as a database for solving unsolved sex crimes. It also serves to allow us to focus enforcement efforts on specific groups of offenders, such as parolees, individuals who are on felony probation, individuals who have been convicted in the past of possession of child pornography. And also, we've identified the registered sex offenders who are also identified gang members within the city also.
Thank you very much.
Certainly, we do appreciate your leadership in terms of the motion and your focus and concern on this issue. We think that, long term, once we work the bugs out and identify more efficiencies in this process, this could be a best practice for other local police departments and sheriff's departments throughout the state of California, because we do need to be able to talk with one another to share information. And I think the model is being created here, certainly under your political leadership, but certainly with the working group, because they have worked very, very hard to create and to craft a process that, at this point, is working quite well. So we thank you, and certainly I'd just like to acknowledge them for their good work.
Well, thank you very much, and I think this is certainly a potent weapon now that would be used by our law enforcement officials, and I know a lot of time and effort was put into this. I want to thank you again, thank the people from LAPD and the City Attorney's Office, and all of you have put some, a lot of time into this, and certainly ITA, the Information Technology Agency, who, at the end of the day, it's them who dot the i's and cross the t's. So I think for this, the city of Los Angeles is going to be a much safer place to be, and certainly it's going to perhaps protect one of our most precious resources in our city, and that's our young people, as we protect them from sexual predators. So thank you again. And colleagues, I urge your support and a vote on this. And this is a long time in the making, but here is the city of Los Angeles, once again, providing, being on the cutting edge of how to continue to provide the best law enforcement in the country. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have Mr. Zine and Mr. Parks, and we do have one card from Fritz Koenig. Mr. Weisar, would you like to hear... Mr. Weisar, we do have one card from Fritz Koenig. Should we hear the public comment, Mr. Zine, just real quick before you speak? Is that all right with you? Okay.
Which way you prefer.
Public comment's fine.
Mr. Koenig.
The U.S. Department of Justice sponsored a study that came out in two thousand and six from the National Center for Juvenile Justice. Study report is called Juvenile Offenders and Victims, Two Thousand and Six National Report. Sexual assaults upon children are perpetrated by three types of people: family members, acquaintances, and strangers. Family members make up thirty-five percent of the perpetrators of sexual assault against children. That means parents, uncles, nieces, nephews, brothers, and sisters. Acquaintances, known to the child, make up sixty percent. Sexual assaults against children perpetrated by strangers make up only five percent of the cases that occur nationwide.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Five percent is significant enough for me to make sure that we have it documented. I had one of my constituents contact my office regarding the website watchdog.com, and there's a registered sex offender that's in close proximity to a school. We did some research and found that there's different categories of sex offenders that are registered. This particular individual is a registered sex offender, but doesn't fall within a specific category. I thought you're either a sex offender or you're not. But can you explain, and maybe we need to expand this, the state law says there's a certain radius between where that sexual, registered sex offender lives and the school. But just because they're registered sex offender doesn't mean they can't live next to a school based upon the category of sex offender. And I was unaware of that until we did some research. Can you explain that particular process and how we can rectify that? It's like you're either a felon or you're not. You're a bank robber or you're not. I guess there's whole kinds of different categories of sex offenders that have to register, and which ones have to be within the radius of the school and which ones don't. Detective Webb, do you have that answer? Because I'm totally in the dark about that.
I do, sir. Certain registered sex offenders cannot live within a certain proximity of schools, and those are sex offenders who are currently on parole. With the passage of Jessica's Law last November, there are additional residency requirements or restrictions, rather, that can be imposed on registered sex offenders. However, the actual qualifications for the restrictions is still undergoing some court review, as I understand. But the bottom line is, most sex offenders, and in the city of Los Angeles, only about twenty percent of our registered sex offenders, right, a little less than nine hundred, have any type of residency restrictions. And the rest of our registered sex offenders, over four thousand, have no residency restrictions.
So you could have a registered sex offender living right next to a preschool or elementary school or middle school?
Unless they're on parole or they have probation restrictions from living in close proximity right now until Jessica's Law, Proposition Eighty-Three, is clarified. Correct.
Okay, how do we get that resolved? Because there's a misconception, especially with the public websites that are up, where people run that information, they find out, here's a school, there's a registered sex offender, and the public is not informed, there's different categories, and whatever's happening in the legal process, we need to somehow come to a resolution that this radius is going to be enforced. What can we do? I don't know if my colleague, Mr. Weisar, was aware that you have these different rules regarding that. How do... Only four hundred out of the total number. It seems that we need to broaden that somehow. What can this council do to help resolve that issue? And if... To be a registered sex offender, you have to commit some act somehow and get convicted in court. So it's after the arrest, after the conviction, after the trial, after all that. So you've already gone through that criminal justice process, which is a lengthy process, and then you have to follow this. So it's not like someone assumes you're a sexual predator, you've been convicted in the court of law. How do we enhance that? And how do we assist in that?
Well, as far as the misconception about residency requirements, it is actually a very common misconception, and the Los Angeles Police Department is working very closely with the Attorney General's Office to develop a education program so that the public is aware of what the restrictions are and what they aren't. And of course, our city's registration enforcement and compliance teams are component of their duties, not only enforcing registration requirements, but is also has an education component. And so our units are more than willing to go out to any community groups and address this issue, and which, of course, we have done in the past also.
I think the public would be more concerned about having the law enhanced than if you're a registered sex offender, you can't live within a certain radius. A half mile, is that the rule?
Well, it's... Currently, it's if you're on parole, it's a quarter mile.
A quarter mile from a school.
And then it's a half mile if you are a high-risk sex offender.
That's what... It was the high-risk sex offender. I mean, when you talk about the high-risk sex offender, the sec... To me, a sex offender is a sex offender. What's the difference between a high-risk sex offender and, or a routine sex offender? I mean, what's... High risk, okay. So define high-risk and define, what is it, sexual offender and a high-risk sex offender?
The evaluation process is exclusively within criteria set forth by the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. So it's parole, in a sense, that's making that determination as to who's a high-risk sex offender.
What would be a description of a high-risk sex offender, though?
You know what, sir? You would have to ask parole specifically about that, as to what constitutes someone who's called a high-risk sex offender, because it's exclusive to parolees.
But we're not aware which ones are high-risk sex offenders, then?
We... Yes, we're very aware of the ones who are designated high-risk sex offender because the React units work closely with parole. Not only that, but the React units, the investigating officers, have access to the global positioning system that tracks the high-risk sex offenders who are also on, have a global positioning system.
See, I would ask my colleague, who is behind the enhancement, that maybe we do a little more exploration. We move on this, but we do a little more exploration to get a definition, because when people pull up these websites and they show a map, there are residents, there's a school, and there's a registered sex offender, all of a sudden the alarms go off and figure that we're not doing our job in government to protect their children from high-risk sex offender, whatever the category you want to describe. We need to do a little more exploration and to enhance that so the public will know. Because if you've got different categories, you know, like if you run through a red light, you're not going to go to jail. You drive drunk, you're going to go to jail. People understand that distinction. With this, I think there's a big misconception amongst the public, and I would ask the author that we do something to enhance that if we could and work with the police department to make that happen, because I think for the public good, we need to enhance it. Command... Captain, or Jose, or somebody?
Mr. Zine, we'll take this motion as it is today and then follow up with your office to see how we could get a follow-up research and bring something back toward, to council.
And certainly, from our standpoint, we can do the research and provide information and definitions relative to your concerns and make that available to you.
And these are concerns, not only of mine, but concerns of the public, especially the public with young children. And we hear the stories, and obviously, it frightens people. But with all the access to websites and all the access that people have, this really sets off the alarm, especially with the youngsters, that they... Parents are in fear of their youngsters being victimized. So some enhancement, I think, we can pursue from this level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was wondering, could you... I just wasn't aware, the one issue that you brought up about if you're off parole, you no longer have the restriction?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that fairly new?
No, sir.
Or has that been part of the law all the time?
Yes.
Because I was always in the impression that you carried that restriction for, once you were declared, that you carried it for, beyond your parole. But I was just wondering, is that something that was recently altered?
No, sir.
Okay. So when we say there's housing restrictions or distance restrictions, only while on parole, what about probation?
If there's a specific housing restriction for felony probationers, then yes, it could be imposed.
Okay. And then, I think it is important, Mr. Zine talked about having what those classifications, because I think most people are under the impression that these sex offenders are there for life and they're all sex offenders, and so I think it is important to clarify it. I just wanted to steal a little time and ask the attorney on, you're also working on something that impacts the Eighth District on the number of people that are allowed to be housed in certain facilities upon release, and I was wondering, what was the status of that particular effort? I understand we may be considering increasing it from six to eight or six to ten as it relates to what I guess you call them halfway houses?
Absolutely. I do work on that issue. I would be happy to meet with you or your staff and talk about it in detail. It is unfortunately complicated, because there's... Just as a very quick example, people use the term sober living facility or halfway house, and these are kind of sometimes used by the public, talking about another area of kind of confusion, for a lot of areas that are actually different legally. You know, they could actually be a licensed facility or an unlicensed facility, and sometimes that umbrella phrase will be used. So I'd be certainly happy to talk in detail at any time.
Yeah, we appreciate it, because we've had a couple of instances where the public is very, very concerned. Let me ask you on the 290 system, would that have any application for land use or issues that are beyond the officers just being aware of an individual as far as other forms of systems in which the city would take advantage of it?
Well, we're hoping, actually, quite on the topic you were speaking about, that by being able to correlate between the properties, because we can now with this 290 database have a, because of all those great search functions, we can search to see how many sex offenders are at a particular residence. So if there are particular residents that's only allowed to have, say, a single-family dwelling, that's only allowed to have so many sex offenders, but we're now without the system able to determine that there are more than... So yes, there are different applications for the system.
But people such as building, safety, and planning wouldn't be able to have access to that?
Oh, no. The 290 database is exclusive, basically, to the Los Angeles Police Department.
What would be a system in the sense of if we're approached and, say, Unified School District wants to cite a school? Would that be the Megan's database? Is that something they would use or we would be looking at if a school was cited to determine if that is an appropriate location or whether there would be people within, that would be in violation?
Well, as I mentioned, I think this is a very good question. What we've done, just to tell you the proactive step we have done, we have tried to now have a protocol between LAUSD and the Department of Corrections and Parole, pardon me, such that they are able to... that they are able to tell them, we're opening a school here, so if you have any parolees that are within this new area, if you will, they need to be removed, because we're going to put children here.
Okay. So we rely on the school district here? That's not a responsibility that the city would take on, or?
We are, we are copied on the list of new schools, and we are actually on our own behalf moving that information along. We could move it to building or safety or some other department, I suppose, that would be appropriate. We could certainly look into doing that. But yes, currently, it is, it is being sent directly by the LAUSD to Department of Corrections and here in Los Angeles so that they understand where the schools are opening up.
Okay. Now, is there any other, I mean, schools are one, but childcare centers would be the same thing?
Childcare centers is, I think, probably a little more difficult. Currently, I know of no system that, a database, if you will, of all childcare centers.
Because that would be one thing, because we're getting, between citing of schools, and charter schools are now becoming even more of an issue, and then childcare centers, and those kinds of things would all be important to see how they would take advantage of either existing systems or systems within the city. And so we'd just like you to add that to your list of things to look at.
Absolutely. If I might, that's actually Councilmember Weisar's office and along with those, that this table are trying to create a mapping system to better be able to place where all the schools are and where the appropriate buffer zones are to be able to identify in a map very easily of who may be in violation. So thank you, we are trying.
Okay. Because one of the things that we're finding, too, is that in all of our, not all of them, but a lot of our park and rec facilities are now including intergenerational or childcare centers. And so that's another new move, to move more of the intergenerational to one location, where in the past, again, we may not have been as sensitive in the sense of not having childcare. Now that is a fundamental concern, because that's where the direction the city's going in. So that's another area, not only outside childcare center, but city-sponsored childcare centers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Zine?
Just a follow-up question. Recidivism amongst criminals, they say, is about 70%. What's the recidivism rate amongst individuals that you deal with?
Of all the studies I've seen, and there are a lot of them, and they all give different numbers, we haven't specifically tracked recidivism with respect to new sex crimes or sex crimes in general, so I don't have that number for you. The number that I see is about a 25% recidivism for sex crimes. However, I have to stress that there's a wide range of results in these type of studies.
Okay. Thank you. Captain?
We'll look at that issue also and see if we can come up with a specific number. We'll take a look at that. Get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item.
Item 40 was called special for cards from the public.
Yes, Mr. Weisar?
I'd like to reconsider a vote to allow for six minutes of public hearing on item 20, if that's possible. I'm not sure what the procedure is. Would I move to reconsider? Is that what the motion is?
We're going to suspend rules since it went forthwith.
Okay, so could I move to suspend rules?
Okay. I know, you'll second that motion. Okay. The first vote is to suspend the rules. Since it went forthwith, it requires 10 votes. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the suspension of the rules, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. The next item would be to reconsider this vote, and so you'd ask for a reconsideration, seconded by Mr. Rosendahl. Madam Clerk, open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. We did pull back the cards. There are several people who are not here who left already, so, and you're asking for three minutes on each side, Mr. Weisar?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I'm not sure some of these do not have whether they are for against, but there will be three minutes, so I will read the names. And for those of you that would like to speak, I think those that are against that proposal, David Pettit, Francisca Porches, Krist Coast, Judy Redman, Dehan Song, Mel Rosalie Green, are you for or against?
I'm for.
Four, okay. Thank you. Pat Edom, for or against? Pat?
She's not here.
She's not here. Okay. And Carol Ing, and then Maria Estehada, against. So you'll have three minutes with your speakers.
It's just going to be me.
Okay.
So Francisca Porches with the Bus Riders Union, I just want to state how extremely disgusted I am with what happened today in terms of the access for, or the ability for the public to actually talk. I think all of, all of this body, I've heard, talk about democracy, talk about the right of participation, and be very disappointed when people don't come out and vote, right? And we have a group of black and Latino, poor and working-class people, right, who are traditionally the ones that don't vote, who are the ones that traditionally don't come out and give statements. And then we have a body who doesn't allow them to speak and participate. And so when we talk about the being disappointed at that, these are the exact examples that then disappoint people and that then make them not want to actually come back and share anything of what they have to say. And that's just for the record. And second, I just want to say I'm also very disappointed at this motion. I think we all know that there wasn't a time for, to be able to speak, because we know that what we're doing is wrong. I completely disagree with the motion to end or suspend the one-mile bus-only lane. We, a lot of people on this board, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Weiss, you all have worked a lot to keep this thing above water. Councilmember Rosendahl, you have brought this, as you say, brought this back as a debate into this body, and it's moved. Unfortunately, it makes no sense to approve a motion that has no funding, that has no timeline, and that the only concrete thing in it is to suspend the one-mile bus-only lane. And we see this as a tactic to actually get rid of bus-only in general. And so, so we're here to say just how disappointed we are at the motion. We're here to say that we really do lack faith in what LA DOT has done up to this point and what they are going to do. And once again, we want to work with you. We really want to make this happen. The $14 million can happen today if, if all of you want it. We have a process in the city budget, and there was $40 million given voluntarily to the exposition light rail. So why not put $14 million down if we're very serious about extending this bus-only from end to end? And once again, Councilmember Weisar, thank you very much for actually allowing us a time to speak, for bringing this up. Councilmember Rosendahl, I'm really glad you reconsider on us speaking, and thank you once again.
Thank you. And just, I appreciate you being here. We have worked with you, as Chair of the Transportation Committee, for people to know in the council that we did have a public hearing in the committee. And by the council rules normally, unless asked specially, there's not another public hearing, and appreciate our ability to hear from you today, Mr. Weisar. And secondly, I want to just reemphasize my commitment, and I know from the committee's commitment, in adopting this motion, what it does is set forth the opportunity to actually have a Wilshire bus lane. That is our intent, to find the dollars and the ability to get that moving as quickly as possible. Our next speakers on the, is Jay Handel, Robert Rosebrook, Mel Rosalie Green.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to come back to City Hall.
And Jay, just before we start the clock, are you, you and Mr. Rosebrook, each of you, you would have one minute, one minute, and then Mr. Rosebrook and then Mr. Mel Rosalie Green, a one minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for bringing this back up for the public to have input. Believe it or not, it was 31 months ago when I stood here demanding that our cards from our neighborhood be recognized and that we be able to get up and speak. And those council members who sit on this council today, who sat here 31 months ago, refused to open the public hearing again, saying it was in transportation already, it shouldn't be brought back up again. So I do thank you, because it is a good public process when people spend their time to come down here to be heard. Now the bus lane, you're doing the exact right thing. The truth of the matter is, 37 months of a failed project that's been underfunded, underplanned, and under-implemented, district to district, city to city. Our councilman is the first councilman on the West Side that has stood up for the rights of all the people in his district and said enough is enough. You've made the right decision, and we implore you to keep all 10.
Thank you. Mr. Rosebrook?
Excuse me. Thank you for this opportunity to speak out. And like the bus rider union that's here for democracy, that's exactly what I'm here for. You know, the basic premise of democracy is equal opportunity for all, special privileges for none. And unless you've sat in a car and sitting in gridlock, trying to get to work, trying to get to wherever you're going, and you're held back because there's a special privileged lane for bus riders. And let me remind you that the bus riders and the buses are, the majority of it is funded through motorists, yet you're punishing the very people that are providing the finance on this. Let me read what the bus riders in the consent decree. Robert Garcia, the former lead attorney of the Bus Riders Attorney Union, said, "This is a historic decision. The basic premise that people are entitled to equal access to resources is what the MTAK stands for. Let's keep that in practice and put it to work." Thank you.
Mel Rosalie Green?
I basically support 95% of item 20, so I'll allocate my 53 seconds to my solution for the shortfall in funding for MTA. You take the amount of the budget shortfall, that's your top figure, you divide it by the homeowners in the city of Los Angeles with homes in the assessed value over $1 million, you come up with a figure. You assess that amount to every homeowner, the limousine liberals in Bel Air and live in the high areas in the West LA. The people that make $12,000 a year should not have to pay the extra money to ride on the bus. You might consider, I'm going to say this, and it's a dirty word in LA, a city income tax. You've got a city income tax in New York, you've got it in Philadelphia, you've got it in Boston, I believe. The money is there, but the money to pay for MTA should not come from these people from the Bus Riders Union. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the bus riders, and I want to thank the people from West LA for coming here. And this is a long time in coming, and I want to thank DOT for its leadership in coming up with a plan that truly makes Wilshire Boulevard and allows a bus lane to develop itself. One mile for 37 months was a disaster in my district, but I look forward from the ocean in Santa Monica to downtown a bus-only lane. There are plans in the works to move forward, at least with the LA City part, and I challenge the great city of Santa Monica and Beverly Hills to get on the same page as the rest of us. But this gives us some breathing space, and it gives us an opportunity to put a plan together that all parts of the government, both city and other small cities, can have going forward. So I thank you for opening up the public hearing and the discussion, and thank you for your leadership, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. That item is now before us.
And Madam President, just for clarification, this would include the two amendments that you had previously made?
Correct. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 40 was-
And that's forthwith by Mr. Rosendahl.
Item 40 was called special for cards from the public.
Yes, we have a card from the public in Van Nuys. Roger Waters. Mr. Waters still there?
Down. Nobody there?
We will hold that item on the desk while we're waiting to ensure that the speaker is not currently there. He's gone? Okay. Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll on item 40, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Madam President, that does leave just a closed session item.
Yes, and we do have cards on item number 48, so prior to going into closed session, I'd like to acknowledge the next speakers. Mark Baker, who will be followed by Vicky Beglum, I think is how the name, and Mayor, and Ronald Oster. Mr. Baker? Mark Baker? Okay. Okay, is Vicky here?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you, President, and council members. I'm here to speak in opposition to item number 48. This is a settlement of a lawsuit, purported settlement, it really won't settle anything. Councilmember Cardenas earlier on item 11 talked about property rights in America and takings, and what will happen with this settlement is exactly that. Imagine, council members, if you would, that you built an addition to your house that your neighbors objected to, and they sued you. But your addition was built with the full authority and approval of the city, and a court of law said the city was wrong. And the court of law said, go back and find some more, another way to get your permits. And you did that, and the city again said that you were right and granted you permits. And your neighbors again attacked you for that and attacked the city. And another judge was on the cusp of saying, yes, that's wrong, the city is wrong, and you need to tear your house down. That's what is happening in this dispute. My clients have done nothing wrong, and yet the city is, is on the cusp of settling a lawsuit and paying an untold amount of money to these four neighbors, two lawyers and two judges, for harassing my clients for five years. This settlement settles nothing. It will force my clients to amplify an existing lawsuit against the city, it will force them to file a federal lawsuit to protect the very property rights that Councilmember Cardenas was speaking about early in regard to item 11. It will write a blank check to these neighbors, we have no idea how much money these neighbors are being paid, and it will settle nothing. It will simply fan the flames of this dispute. When you go into closed session on this, I'd like to just ask Hector Bietrago from LADBS if he thinks he was right, and if he says, yes, he was right. You need to search your conscience and ask yourself if this settlement will settle anything, because it won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky?
My name is Vicky Beglari, and I'm the owner of the home. And we have done everything that the city has required us to do. We have followed everything that they've asked us to do. And now they are willing to give thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to these neighbors and take away our permits. And one solution that they suggest is a variance. But yet if we followed all of the codes, then why do we have to go and get a variance? And then how do we go and get a variance if we have followed all of the codes? This makes no sense, and I ask you not to support this order.
Mayor, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Mayor Beglari. I and my wife built a home for our family about five years ago, and we have been harassed by two neighbors that live across from our house and one person that doesn't even live in the neighborhood for the past five years. They've harassed us, they have harassed the city of Los Angeles. Now the city is caving in and giving hundreds of thousands of dollars for doing the right thing by issuing the permits, by issuing the legal permits that we were entitled to. We had permits twice, and both times have been revoked for no reason. The second time especially, there was a due process right that we were denied. The city revoked our permit without doing a due process. And then when we went to the city commissioners and asked them to let the building and safety know that they did wrong, they voted 5-0 in our favor, ruled that the city erred in revoking our permit and violating our due process right, and ordered the city to reissue our permits. And as of today, the city is refusing to do that. But yet they're willing to pay these neighbors hundreds of thousands of dollars without knowing the exact amount. the exact amount and still having our permit in revocation. I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's just, and you will be fanning the injustice by ruling in their favor and approving this agenda. So I urge you not to do that. Read the fine lines and see what exactly took place. These people have different agenda, a hidden agenda, and don't allow that. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronald Oster?
Madam President and council members, my name is Ronald Oster and I'm one of the petitioners in Horwitz versus City of Los Angeles and I urge the council to approve this settlement. I think the single most important fact that just constantly gets overlooked by, certainly by the previous speakers, is that there was a binding final court decision that says the house built was illegal. It was fourteen feet closer to the curb, three stories high and fourteen feet closer to the property line that it should have been. That was after all the city procedures had been followed, after the entire appellate process had gone through, after Mr. Beglari took his case by way of a petition for review to the California Supreme Court and the court's ruled it's an illegal structure, it doesn't comply with the code. And incidentally, that was raised when that house was being built and the only reason those permits were originally given is because incorrect information was submitted in order to get the original permits. When that came out, when all the other procedures were followed and the appellate decision came down, it's an illegal building. There's only two things you can do about it, either fix it or take some other step to bring it in compliance with the law. Now, that never happened. And that created problems for the city, it created problems for us, and it ultimately led to contempt proceedings that had to be brought to enforce the peremptory writ. In our system, when the court rules, that's the final word, you have to follow it. And we now have worked out a settlement to put those contempt proceedings to one side. I think it's a just result, a reasonable result. First of all, for Mr. Beglari, it sets up an adjudication for the court where he can make whatever arguments he wants to make to say that his house is sufficient, is legal. If there are anything he wants to say and if he prevails, he's fine. If the court rules, "No, it isn't appropriate, he hasn't corrected the problem," then he will have to take the steps to do that. It deals with the city's problem of the contempt proceedings, those are disposed of. I think my time is up, but I would add one last point, I think this is really most important. It sets up a mechanism so that if we ever get into this problem again, we don't have to proceed in this fashion.
Thank you.
We have hired the council to-
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, announce that we'll be going into executive session.
Yes, we, city council is now going into closed session pursuant to government code section five-four-nine, five-six-point-nine-A to discuss settlement negotiations in item number forty-eight.[786.81]
Mr. City Attorney, if you could...
Madam President, on item 48, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $425,000 in the case of David Horowitz versus the City of Los Angeles.
Madam Clerk, do we take a vote on this? Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Okay, then we need to have the vote retaken, please. Glad I could help you out there. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Councilmember Weisar requests to be excused Friday, June 29th for city business. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Friday, September 14th for city business. Councilmember Alakon requests to be excused to leave at 10:45 on Friday, May 11th for That also meets council policy. Councilmember Smith requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 on Friday, May 11th and for the entire meetings of July 25th and 27th, all for city business. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, May 11th to leave at noon for city
Mr. Parks, you want to announce when we're starting?
We'd like to let everybody know in the Budget Committee, we start at 2:00. And then we'd just like to announce a couple of our community programs this week with baseball season starting, both St. Andrews, well, Van Ness Playground starts this Saturday, May 5th, St. Andrews starts May 12th at 10:00 a.m. And then also, we'd like to announce that the Smart Strategies dealing with gangs has a community meeting dealing with a variety of issues on Thursday, May 3rd. And then also, the Center for Creative Land Recycling will also have their event this evening at 6:00 p.m. on May 3rd at the Metropolitan Charter Annual Awards Dinner.
If not, yes, no, we're doing announcements?
Madam President, I ask actually that all members join in adjourning in memory of LAFD Captain Danny Seibert, who I think many of you would have known, he was the Secretary of UFLAC and had been so for several months. He had nearly 38 years of city service, more than 40 years in the emergency medical field, had been a captain for 23 years, and was a really wonderful, sweet guy, who whenever you went over to UFLAC, he was just, he was one of the guys who was always there, he was always smiling, he was always friendly, and he was just, just one of the nicest people you would ever want to meet, and one of the nicest people we could have as an ambassador from our fire department. He was killed tragically this weekend riding his motorcycle in Nevada and Arizona with some friends of his from the fire department, and it was a real, as you can imagine, it was a horrible personal tragedy for all of them that they could not save him, so for all members could adjourn in his memory.
All members. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I'd like to have this adjourning motion listed or presented by myself, Councilman Cardenas, and Richard Alakon, and I would also like to request that all of the members of the council be listed as well. This is bittersweet, happy sad. I'm sad because of the loss of a good friend and a colleague of mine, Lou Pappin, who I served with and Tony served with and, and Richard served with when we were with the state legislature. He was a good man, he served for 20 years, and he's survived by his two daughters. I want to just take the liberty, if I can, to say a few more things about him, because I know that if Richard was here and Tony were here, they would say some things as well. I'm sad with his passing, but I'm happy that I had an opportunity to really get to know this man. And I don't want to sound chauvinistic, but I say that he was a man's man, and I personally learned so much from Lou. Lou had several titles in his career, one of which was as the enforcer of the assembly. He got this title because he got into a difference of opinion with athletic assembly member, I think, who played quarterback from one of the California colleges named Ken Mead, and for whatever, I don't know what possessed Mr. Mead, but he threw a cup of coffee at Lou Pappin, and Lou Pappin knocked him out, and therefore, he got his title as the enforcer of the assembly. He was a former FBI agent, so I guess you, you shouldn't mess with those guys. He had another nickname, they called him Leadfoot Lou, because he had the record of traffic tickets in, in the assembly, but what a lot of people didn't know, Leadfoot Lou was rushing home every night to spend time with his dying son. It's the kind of person that he was. And when I served with him, he was referred to as the dean of the California State Assembly, because he had the most experience, and he was beloved by just about everybody, and he taught us all, or at least he taught me several things. The difference between being here on the council and being in Sacramento, they have guards and they literally lock the door so that you cannot leave, and I would notice, unless you had a pass from the speaker, and I would notice that whenever Lou would exit the assembly, they would just open the door and let him out, and I would go and they'd say, "You need a pass." So one day, I was talking with Lou, and he whispered in my ear, and he told me what to say to the guards. So the next time I tried to exit the door, the guard says, "You need a pass." I said, "Let me out, or I'm gonna break the doggone door down." And from that point on, whenever I wanted to leave, I was able to leave. Lastly, something that Lou was very, very, very proud of was, there was a speakership fight between Leo McCarthy and Willie Brown. At the end of the day, Leo McCarthy received the votes to become Speaker of the California Assembly, and the thing that Lou thought was so promising was that there were, the difference came from African-American votes, voting for a non-African-American person. And again, for real, last, what Lou taught me was that there's one thing worse than abusing power, and that's not using power. He was a good man, and he will be missed.
Thank you. Wonderful tribute. Mr. Zine?
Tomika S. Robinson. Many of us know a man by the name of Big Willie, Big Willie Robinson. His wife, Tomika, passed away April 29th. Married for 38 years to her beloved husband, Willie Robinson. They had never spent a night apart until she was sick and in the hospital. Willie was away from Tomika two nights when the hospital made special arrangements so that Willie could stay with Tomika. Tomika and Willie dedicated many years to working with Brotherhood Raceway in the L.A. Harbor, started in 1968. Tomika and Willie also worked with the Army Intelligence Homeland Security from 2002 until she fell ill. Tomika passed away from a stroke at 57 years of age. She would have celebrated her birthday this year, September 14th. Tomika lost her father in 1984 and her mother in 1988. Tomika was born in Kobe, Japan, came to the U.S. with her military father and mother at four years of age, growing up in Salinas, California. She would be deeply missed by her family and loved ones. Fuel arrangements are Saturday, May 12th at 11:30, Inglewood Cemetery, Manchester Chapel, 3801 West Manchester, in Inglewood, survived by one sister and three brothers. My just personal comment on Tomika, she was a wife that stood by Willie all the time. He was a large, Willie is a large man, and he was always trying to get the street racers away from street racing. He worked with us when I was with the LAPD, he worked with many members of law enforcement, higher patrol, sheriff's department, trying to advocate for safe ways for those youth that want to race on the streets, and he was a legend. He wore, always wore jackets, street racers, and he was the president of Brotherhood Street Racers. I spoke to him a few days ago, and he's, this was his partner, his love, his entire life. I remember also going to the funeral services for Otis Chandler in Pasadena, and during the services, Willie stood up, and he started talking about Otis Chandler, and people started, "What's this man saying?", because he's always dressed in a fatigue uniform with this Brotherhood Raceway jacket, and they thought he was gonna like terrorize the place, and what Willie spoke about-